And the expectation is as soon as they come on 5:30, they're starting, you know, they're doing the meeting.
What time you gonna get out here?
I gotta get up. I gotta, I gotta get out here at, uh, 5:45. I, I may do my.
You teaching the lessons?
Yeah, Co-lead, that's Freedom Group.
Freedom. Freedom. Y'all got a thing, y'all have a thing on? All right, we live on Vimeo. It works.
Oh, and so they can see us?
Yes. They can hear us talking about the good news.
Dr. Hanson, how are you tonight, sir?
I'm doing well, Mr. Jared. How are you?
Making sure I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I sure can. Yes, sir. How are you?
Yeah, I was muted at first, so sorry about that.
That's okay. No, I, I hear you loud and clear. Sounds good.
And how are you tonight, sir?
Is that an echo?
That was just a repeat. That's, that's a delay.
Okay.
I've never pushed that button. Well, nothing's happening. It just, oh wait. No sound. Yes, sound. All right.
Is that the old one?
You logged in.
I mean, you can be logged into many, many. Not that I would know that, but if I did know that, I would know it's a true statement.
We have a C S like a base to update just on what we're going to work on for the next.
And is it different than what's in Board Notes?
It's the same thing, but it's usually easier.
We just need to make sure to tell Dennis that it's seven or six, whatever.
They, yeah.
Because.
I mean, if not, you can get trouble. He'll just ask.
Right. If, and that. So the, um, brand part of cross-country team is eight whole people, boys and girls, but everyone we are against.
Dennis can.
Dennis can, yeah. Good.
I have to talk quick. I'm getting ready to start.
Head to head, we're six feet apart.
Okay, so we just all look.
Yes, just can't turn to each other.
I do. I can, but it'll have to be later. So it's been two weeks today since I was diagnosed. Um, the, the problem is that I, it starts by eight inch of cranium there. And so I want to know how I have really deteriorated. I was telling my children her job is on my, I guess, their job is, I start to think it's like, wow. So that sounds like a lot of fun.
If you're here, I'm gonna search you.
Yeah.
Mostly, yeah.
We can share.
Yep, yep.
Julie, did you get the links I sent? Did you get the links I sent?
I don't know. When did you send them? Hello, everyone. Indiana City, there's a little bit about cortex. So, you know, I found it in, like, I don't know how to get the links. We need to learn how to do that. But that's my mail. All of you later. Why am I? I know. I just put mine in the conference room. Hello? Oh, I'm on mute. And then I just do this to get off.
It's far.
Oh, I think you went the wrong thing, because that's a good one. Yeah, so you want, you don't want to go for me. Scroll on down. Scroll on down. That was good. I mean, I think.
No, I think you were going to be the only one on with.
Hello? So it's just gonna have an echo. It just, that's gonna be. Okay.
So, yeah, um, Julie, if you can have your volume off.
I've got it off.
Okay. Because feedback is the devil.
So Kim, you want me to.
Yes.
Yeah, just for when you're talking, yours, when you're talking.
Wait, what's going to speakers? Because we're gonna need to have one computer unmuted at least so that we can hear Gloria, Randy.
Ri- right now, that's me. David, can you, can you, um, talk?
Let me unmute.
Okay.
Testing. Got it.
Keep talking.
Uh, tonight, we will be looking at the board work session on school police SOP. He is not.
Tim, are you feeling better? Dr. Hanson, are you feeling better?
I think it's allergies. I went to Walgreens this morning and bought some, I've never taken any of that, like Claritin or Allegra. And I took some this morning. It felt a little better, but starting to get scratchy again. Energy-wise and everything else, I feel good. I just, it's not like I've been inhaling campfire smoke for a weekend.
Good evening, everyone. This is Dennis, and, uh, just wanted to let you guys know that according to schedule, uh, we are live on Vimeo as of now.
Thank you, Mr. Jared. I sent you a text. If you could check your phone for me, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us tonight. Um, if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And with that, I'm going to start with Dr. Hanson so that we can begin our review and our public meeting about the Warren Township Police Department SOP.
Thank you, President Burke, um, President Burke, members of the board, members of the community. Tonight, our workshop, work session focus is our school police standard operating procedures. These procedures were first adopted in 2014. Um, we revised them in 2017, and, uh, three years later, we are making some revisions to them again. Um, tonight, we will present those revisions to you, um, for discussion, um, so that we can take action for them at the October board meeting. Um, I would like to recognize, uh, Chief Pettis, um, Chief Operation Officer, uh, David Holt, um, as they will be the ones presenting along with myself this evening, um, to discuss the revisions. But I also want to thank them for their proactive, um, nature and, and getting in front of, um, some of these things and making sure that these, um, standard, standard operating procedures, um, are what we need to su- serve and support our students and community. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Holt.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson, uh, President Burke, members of the board. Let me, uh, let me make sure this is working. Is it, um, there we go. This evening, uh, we wanted to take the opportunity to give you some extended time to kind of go through the standing operating procedures for our school police department. This evening, we will kind of do a deep dive into what we call the SOP, the standing operating procedures for the police department, and talk to you about some of the recommended changes. And these are somewhat minor changes. As Dr. Hanson alluded to earlier, we adopted a standard operating procedures back in 2014 when we created a statutory police department, which Indiana Code allowed us to do back then. In 2017, we made some just very minor changes, um, changes of names, basically in the very beginning. But as we go through this, we, in most of our presentations, we want to make sure that we understand how each of these processes impact your board goals. First and foremost, the safety and security of the students of Warren Township is, is the primary focus of our, our school police department. But offering, uh, high-quality programming and involvement and participation, those are key words that you'll see in the SOP as you have a chance to look through it.
Mr. Holt, if you can, could you minimize the, um, can I see where everyone's faces are? There's the little line.
Yep, right there. Thank you. We included for you this evening the mission statement that the school board has because it, as we, as we got into this and we really, you know, we're looking at what does the school police department do? This mission statement embodies exactly what they want to do on a daily basis, um, which is when you really talk about fostering meaningful relationships and, you know, talking about all students, families, and employees, that's really what the police department is here to do. So it's important that we, we incorporate the mission statement that the school board has into the mission statement of the SOP as well. One of the things that we looked at was, um, enhancing and slightly changing the goals that were in, already in the SOP. These five goals that the school police department has were very, very similar to what was in the previous SOP that's been approved. We just, we cleaned it up a little bit. We made it a little bit, um, more personal, and, uh, we wanted to make it a little bit more about what Chief Pettis brings. And, uh, and just increasing especially the, the bottom one, which talks about just all officers upholding the Constitution, federal law, state law, department policy. Those are things you saw before, but we've expanded the definition and tried to clean that up and make it a, a little bit more friendly. Again, we want to remind you kind of how does the chain of command work between the school police department and the administration and the school board. First and foremost, the, um, the school board directs and, and creates the school police department, then the superintendent, and then the chief of police. So that's really kind of the order of how things really work. I'm gonna take a step back and kind of revisit history and how we got here. Uh, many years ago, 2014, we created the police department. Indiana Code 20 dash 26 dash 16 allows a school corporation to create a statutory police department. And also taking a step back, I want to re- remind you that this SOP needs to include not just language about how we serve our students, but how we serve the adults in this community, because as a statutory police department, our, our police officers need to be able to respond to all situations. They could be called in to help support IMPD, Cumberland, other local law enforcement agencies. So you may see some language in the SOP that you may think that is not always kid or student-friendly, but we have to make sure that we have include in, in there everything that would, be for all situations, including those situations with adults. Um, the Board of Education appoints the police officers, you know, through the SOP, you're creating the duties. Uh, one of the things you do is, is, is help create the uniforms, which we aren't really changing, but we did change the, the, the badge a little bit. If you'll see on the front of your SOP and on the front of this presentation, we, we, we modified the badge a little bit, and, um, I know Chief Pettis is really proud of that. It was something that was his personal creation. I also want to remind you that the SOP is, is really like a job description for our police officers. So it's important that you are prescribing and creating the duties and daily responsibilities for them. It will be their responsibility to make sure they have read this SOP and that they understand and are, um, accepting of all the terms and conditions and, and policy and structure within this, this operating, um, program. So with that, I kind of wanted to go through for you some of the modifications and changes that we are looking at adding to the SOP. And again, I, I, I will emphasize, this is, this is not a significant change. We, we have the opportunity to improve our current approved SOP. And I think it's a great time to clarify, redefine, and create some additional philosophy that we think is important for our school police department. One of the earlier slides, I showed you the goals, and we did revise the goals from the original SOP. We, they are still, if you really, if you put them side by side, they look very similar, and the intent is very similar. We've tried to clean it up to make it more community-friendly, police officer-friendly, uh, and easier for anyone to understand, including our officers. So let's get into maybe some more of the, the whys and what were, what, what was driving some of this. The second bullet point that we're, we're putting in changes would be administration inquiries of school policy and law violations, which would be SOP number six on your draft. And really, this is being driven from a couple of recent, um, judgments, uh, legal proceedings against school corporations here locally where, um, individuals had their rights violated by having a police officer specifically in the room during a, a school investigation, school policy investigation, not necessarily just a criminal investigation. So in SOP number six, we, we, we took the opportunity to more clearly define the separation of duties between the administration, school administration, and school police. And when those two entities would, would interact with a student, a family member, a community member, and it needs to be very specific. So I want to make sure you understand the why of what we're adding to, um, subsection six in the SOP. And it's really to define the separations of duties between our school administration and our school police officers to limit liability and protect individual rights. For instance, the lawsuits were, were brought forth in these other two school corporations because the individual felt threatened because a police officer was sitting in the room while they were doing a school policy discussion. And the, the school district had the officer in the room for the, what I, what I believe was probably to make sure that, um, a proper decorum and, um, there wasn't any sort of, uh, outburst or anything like that in the room. But we need to make sure that we protect the rights of the individuals. If a school administrator were to feel like there was a need to bring in school police, we would, we would actually formalize the process. And, um, some, and you also have to read in their rights at that particular point in time. So any questions for many board members on really the first main revision that we were looking, and this is just cleaning up and clarifying really separations of duties based on recent court proceedings? And you'll be able to see in your drafts, the changes, they should be highlighted. And I, and again, I, I, I want to reiterate that the, um, the SOP has been created, amended, and revised through our attorney, our, our counsel, Church Churchill in Antrim, which is Andrew Manna. So the changes that you are seeing were actually created by him.
I don't see that we have any questions on this part so far.
The next bullet point, um, we wanted to take the opportunity, and there was already some definition, but we wanted to further the, explain the use of restraint and seclusion, um, in our SOP, which is, which would be SOP number eight in your draft, to specifically look at when we would, um, place handcuffs on a, an individual and when it, and we, we tried to define age appropriateness in there as well. Uh, we just felt like it was important for us to add language that was a little bit more student-friendly and the use, so to make sure that officers understood the, the need to, um, under, understand when and how and why, um, a restrain or seclusion would occur. Again, this is a minor change and just an expansion of our current definition, um, to really add in some student-friendly language, um, to subsection eight. Um, and I believe this is the right thing, and this is really for, not necessarily you as the board, but for our police officers also to make sure that they sign and understand this new requirement. Yeah, but in that, within that section, there's, there's, I think there's, that section is fairly long. I think it's, yes. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. No problem. So I'd be happy, or, and, and please, Chief Pettis is here with me to help explain any of those definitions or expansion of the language in that subsection, if you'd like. Again, we feel like this is an opportunity to more clearly define, I think, student expectations. We also had Allison Woods review this to make sure that this incorporated all language that would be necessary for those students of special needs as well.
And I don't see any board questions on that section.
Mr. Holt, one, so clarification, so any student, correct, Ms. Allison? It would be any student, all students on that? Yeah.
Yes.
Adrian, question for you. So in, on page 22 where it says WTS transport, section C starts with prisoner, is that a common term that, that you use, that the police use when they have a person in custody?
Page 22, section C. Correct. Correct. Yes, it is.
Any other questions on that? If not, we will move to the next bullet point, which is de-escalation and use of force.
I want to ask, are you, are you showing it on the screen? Because I know on my computer, I'm not able to see it. Is that just me or?
We're showing the PowerPoint with, to give an overview of the SOP that, she, she doesn't have access, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay. I don't have.
It's on board docs.
Okay.
Gloria, it's in board docs.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'll have to go there.
So David, if you want to continue.
Sure. Next, the next bullet point is really what was somewhat driving the, the need for some discussion. SOP 14, we are taking the opportunity to expand and I believe improve the overall section. It is intentional that we are titling the, DS, this de-escalation and use of force because we are changing the philosophy and promoting and emphasizing de-escalation as our primary use of interaction with students, parents and community members. And that is intentional. And I think that's important for us to make sure that we, we start with de-escalation and it needs to start in our SOP with the escalation and then gradually move towards other, other options that would be available. Chief Pettis uses the term tools on his belt. What, and that can be your, your mind, your hands, the other things, but de-escalation needs, it needs to start with that. And so we more clearly define de-escalation. We talk about the different types of de-escalation that are available. And again, this is for our police officers to understand and sign off on. And then it continues with, you know, beyond de-escalation, what other uses of force would be approved? And I wanted to take this opportunity to make sure we highlight in SOP 14, and this is an addition, in three different sections on this, we are emphasizing that chokeholds are not acceptable in any form of interaction, whether it be through de-escalation, whether it be through any of the use of force. And it is intentional that it is in there three times. I think it's important in this climate, and I think it's important for you as a school board to make sure that is included and put in there more than once. And each of the different sections that are available and interactions that a police officer would have with a student, a parent, a community member. So that is really the change to that section, which is moving de-escalation to the, to the beginning to emphasize that, and then adding a, in a few sections where chokeholds are not appropriate, or not allowed, I should say, unauthorized. And if we have questions, I would, I would ask Chief Pettis because he, he's, he's the one that would understand and deals with that day-to-day. If any of the board members have questions specifically on those sections, be happy to answer those now.
So not necessarily a question, but a comment. I know that when we were going through and revising this, there's a balancing act that has to take place through everything that we address. We want to make sure that whenever possible, de-escalation is used and that no one is hurt or harmed or has hands placed on them, et cetera. But the other thing that has to be considered is that there is always an outside chance that something really terrible can happen. And so we need to make sure that we have policies that cover both ends of the spectrum, both a child that is young and acting out and perhaps committing a criminal offense, but that needs to be treated in a very specific way all the way through a true dangerous situation, emergency that also has to be treated in a specific way. And so that balancing act is reflected throughout the entire document, that we have to make sure that we are keeping our students safe in both situations. And I wanted to thank Chief Pettis a lot. A lot of our discussions had to do with making sure that we maintain that balance and the ability to keep all of our students safe at all times.
And President Burke, dude, I know we've had some conversations about the difference between protecting against human life versus property. And I know that is really attributed to your comments, and I think you can probably explain it better.
So when reviewing other SOPs that were out there, whether they were at the state or the city, one of the things that came up is that lethal force was allowed within the city of Indianapolis to protect property. And I felt very strongly, and Chief Pettis did as well, that we can't use that level of force or really a level of force that can harm someone to protect property. We need to protect life above property and that needs to always be the way that our officers are looking at a situation, that they have the ability to protect life first and property is something else. We can replace lost computers, we can't replace a lost life.
Yeah, and I think that's a very important addition. It's a, just a few words into one of the sections in, in SOP 14, but it's, and it's an extremely important few words that we've added and it's important for all of our officers to understand that.
And again, I really appreciate the work with all of that because that was, on a personal, that was really important to me that we made, that that language was in there. And it did end up being a very, I don't want to oversimplify by saying, a simple incertation. It was just a few words, but those words and that change were backed by the chief and everyone that was involved in the process. And I think it's just very important because the stress that we have here is we have to maintain order, we have to maintain student safety, but we can't allow the possible life of, loss of life over loss of property. In the end, life is what's important.
As we go through this, I mean, this is the section, section 14, I'm, I'm most pleased that we've been able to update because I, I'm really confident that this is, this, this outlines all of our expectations and we are 100% and all in agreement on this. And I think, you know, we're not really changing, again, I'm going to say, we're not changing our SOP very much, but what we are changing, especially in section 14, I think is extremely important because we've added some philosophical statements that I think are important for not only you as a school board, but for our community. And so I think I'm most proud of that section that we've been able to improve, improve that from where it was. Any other questions on that section?
I don't see that we have any.
The next bullet point that we wanted to highlight, and it's just, again, a small change, would be in section 17, SOP 17.
I am so sorry, I was muted and I did have a question. I am so sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. For section 14, did we address the fact, and you know, I, God forbid, I just sincerely hope that we never have deadly force. But in the event of deadly force, it says that, you know, investigation will be done and, and everything, but is it possible for us to include that we will stand behind, if they are found guilty in any way, that we will stand behind full prosecution on their part? Because we just want to make sure that they are held accountable.
Gloria, that's a great point and we, we had some conversation about that last week. You know, I think for the standard operating procedures, that wouldn't be a part of this. And talking with our counsel, you know, who participated in our exec session last week, he recommends that we come out with a statement from the district and the board if a situation were to happen, that the statement that, you know, we would present after knowing the situation, what took place would be more appropriate. The second recommendation that, that Andrew made for us was to look at our board policy because our Warren Police, our Warren Township employees, just like a teacher or a bus driver, taking a look at our policy as a board and a district to see if there's some language that is already, that already exists because we don't allow our other staff to break the law or if, if that would be needed. So I, I think your point's well taken. His, his advice to us is that it would be separate than to the standard operating procedures.
So are there any other questions or comments on SOP 14? Not seeing any, David?
The next section is section 17, reporting procedures in Warren Township Police Review Board. This is a little bit of enhancement and really what this, what is this saying? This is saying there is language within our SOP to allow officers within the department an opportunity to report any discrepancies, violations, acts that may go against the SOP. You know, I, I don't know that the term is correct, but it might be like a whistleblower type of section. I don't know that this is exactly in that same vein, but it would, it, it provides the opportunity for an officer to, to report something against another officer that would then go between, that would then go in front of a police review board. And we felt like it was important to expand the language to protect officers and make them feel comfortable that there was a fair, honest process in place if they felt like there was a situation that occurred. And it is in there that it's required that they should, you know, report something that is in, in direct violation of any of the SOP criteria that you have created and approved. So this is, again, just in, we believe a good enhancement that allows officers to internally feel comfortable and, and create, and specifically create the, the review board to, to look into the complaint.
Okay. In addition to that, I feel that if they see someone that's been out of control, that instead of just waiting to report it, they need to intervene because sometimes they can de-escalate the situation or they can prevent something serious from helping, happening. So, you know, instead of just standing by saying, oh, I'm going to report you, I think that they need to intervene in some way.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct on that. This is Chief Pettis again. What I call, we call it VOC, it's Voice of Calm. So that's, that second officer that comes to the scene, what we train on is that, that first officer that's engaging or has the first response to that, that second officer that comes with the VOC officer was the voice of calm. That officer there should be able to advise that, that officer that's there to either move to the side or they'll assist them with that situation. But you are correct. And then that way that, that officer and that secondary officer, the VOC officer should be able to go through this process for, to report any situation that they feel that is not the correct way to, to handle that situation. But you are correct, we do train on that.
Thank you, Chief Petty. Good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The SOPs and the GO, we call them, this is never, this is a never-ending document. I mean, it could be next month that we want, we see something, we want to add something to it. So every year this document should be reviewed. However, like I say, this, it could be something tomorrow that we want to add on to it as well.
And with your training, you go through this individually with staff?
Correct. Now, even with all our, our trains for our breaks, we don't pick out certain SOPs to go over. And also we have these things called LAPs, they're called learning activity packets. Okay? And what it is, is just like, it's a work session. So what it is, I might say, what is SOP 14 to you? What they have, what the officer, officer has to do is give me the definition of the SOP and what it means to that officer. But these are learning things that we do like, say, every year. So this is something that we need to go through every year as well.
And again, I know that this is language we went through, I'm going to go with a whole bunch of revisions for. And I think what we have is good. It has an absolute need to report within certain situations so that we make sure that, again, everyone is treated fairly and that any incidents that could compromise the safety of our students and our community are dealt with.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, I think it's important. I think Chief Pettis does an excellent job and I, I've seen this in action when, when we have our breaks, our two-week breaks, that is when we do our training with our police officers. Because when we have school in session, our police officers need to be in front of kids, students, excuse me, and parents in the community. So when we do not have as many activities going on in students, we do a lot of training and he does, he picks out certain sections of the SOP because again, I want to remind you, this SOP is what you're creating. It's like creating their job description and it's an extremely important for as many interactions that they would have, that they understand the expectations that the Warren Township School Board has in dealing with certain situations. So that's why, you know, I'm, I'm passionate about this because I think it's important for us to make sure everyone understands and is on the same page for these, these expectations. So, so lastly, the last bullet.
I might say one other thing. This is to Chief Petty. Chief Petty, as far as if there's a parent that have some concerns and feel that they have been, you know, treated unjustly, is, are they able to get in contact with you immediately and express those concerns? You know, it might be regarding some of the officers or anything, but is it possible for parents to have that open line of communication to get in contact with you?
Yes, ma'am. All parents, especially if it's a severe situation, I will be the first one on that scene with that officer. So if I know it's severe and that it could go a little further than what it should be, I'll be the first one on scene and I always give my parents and my information. Sometimes what I like to do is, like I just met with a parent before I came in here. A lot of my late nights here are just meeting with parents. I mean, like my officers know, I mean, if we don't have a good relationship with the parents, we're not going to have a good relationship. if we don't have a good relationship with the parents, we don't have a good relationship with the kids. So, I mean, it, it's a balancing act. So, and with my officers as well, what we normally to go through with training is that we'll speak to the students. However, a lot of students know that, hey, you're going to call your mom, your grandma, or your grandpa. So we make sure we build those relationships and we, they do have that connectivity to connect with me or call me through email, my cellphone number, or my office number.
Thank you.
All right.
Gloria, and in the SOP under Compliments and Complaints, one of the things that it says is that all complaints will go to Chief Pettis and that he has a duty to respond to them.
Okay, great. I'm glad it's there. Okay.
Yes. And so the last bullet point is, is actually dealing, and there are some enhancement as well on the community or outside in creating a process for compliments and complaints that they would have regarding one of our school police employees. And so it defines in there the opportunity for parents to speak directly to Chief Pettis. And then a process to review any situations that they feel were inappropriate. And I, I want to reiterate to what just Chief just said, and that is a big part of his job, is he is the spokesperson for the police department to, to interact with parents. And I know just this week alone, he's had many interactions with parents that had some concerns, not necessarily with our police officers or something, but just how to handle situations, how to handle their students, how to deal with things that they were frustrated with. And Chief Pettis is, is a tremendous person. I've called him affectionately, the Hurt Locker. He's the, he's the person that diffuses the bombs. He, I have not seen anyone in his district do a better job of taking a very difficult situation, upset individual, and being able to sit down with them, listen. He's a great listener. And that's what he and I talk about a lot, is really working with our officers to be good listeners. And he is, he's a tremendous asset for us as a school corporation to have, to, to be that intermediary sometimes between a, a parent, a community member, and our school administration. And so we, we've had a lot of success. And I, I kind of wanted to finish with, why do we have a school police department? And why do I think it's important? It's important because we get to define the expectations. So why six years ago were we one of the first school districts in the state of Indiana to take advantage of the Indiana statute that was created? It was so that we can create the expectations. We control the hiring. We control who, their, their police powers. We control the training. We are a full-service law enforcement agency, and I can't reiterate that enough. I want people to know, we are a full-service law enforcement agency with full police powers. But I believe we are different in some respects in how we go about hiring, the expectations we have for our officers, the interactions that we expect with students, parents, and community members. And that is why we, we are thankful for you as a school board to allow us to continue and continually improve the SOP that allows us to have an even better school police department.
And I would like to say, in speaking with parents, they have complimented Chief Pettis on, they value him establishing relationships. And that's really important. So they put a high value on that. And I would like to say, thank you, Chief Pettis, for, you know, doing that. And it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
So with that, that is really the primary changes in the document. Again, we, we need to take the opportunity to look through this every year. We really should. These are, again, minor changes to an existing document that's approved. But we've taken the opportunity, and, and some based on current national, environmental, the climate, to emphasize what we believe is important. And we've taken this document, and I think it significantly improved. And we will take it back to our officers. And they, and I will tell you, our officers are 100% in support of this as well. Once this document is approved by the school board, each officer will re-sign a new SOP. Each time there's a change, they have to understand what those changes are and sign that they agreed to those. So I, again, I appreciate your willingness to have this conversation. You know, and it takes time to go some, through some of these sensitive topics. But I, I feel really good about where we are with this and how we've improved this and how we've really come out and made some statements that I think are important. For the board members that are not here in person, the draft that we had in front of us at the in-person meeting will be added to the admin content on board docs. If you would like a hard copy between now and the October board meeting, let Kim know and we can either mail that to you or drop that off, or you can pick it up.
And I again, just want to thank David Holt and Andrew Manna and Chief Pettis for their time. And sorry, Dr. Hanson, we've spent a lot of time working on putting together the best document possible for our district. And I do want to reiterate what David said earlier. One of the, on a personal, I think one of the best decisions we have made as a school district while I have been on the board was creating our own police force. With, all police force have civilian oversight to a certain extent. Our civilian oversight is, I believe, a lot closer than many police office forces civilian oversight is. Because of that, we are able to have civilians review the SOP and vote on it. We are able to make sure that what is in that document is truly what we as a community want to have for our students and our community. To me, that is incredibly important. It also means that we know that the officers that we have and the chief that we have are who, and we want and we need to have for our community. And having that level of control has been incredibly important. And I think you can look, you can go to Google to see why. It's, it's pretty straightforward. Why you need to make sure you have the right people in the right jobs, following the right sets of rules. And so I want to, again, thank everyone for their time spent revising this. To community members who are listening.
I do have one more comment, Rachel. Um, go ahead. Don't close out until I have this last comment.
Go on. Go on Gloria.
Okay, Chief Pettis, when we talked before, it was very interesting that you brought out that there are different programs throughout Warren that establish relationships with the students, starting with elementary school through high school. For the benefit of the parents that may not be aware, can you just quickly just talk about those different things that the officers are doing as far as establishing relationships with the students?
Okay, well first, I like to, let's bring up Lieutenant DeNisha Harris. She has a WIP program. It's Women Empowered Program. She meets with female students once or twice a month. It's normally on a weekend day. And on that day, she normally makes arrangements either with our, with the high school, Warren Walker Center. They might do things from cooking to get their nails done. It's just that bonding moment. A lot of them like to see especially an African-American female officer that is engaging in the community where she works at. That's, that's huge for her and also for the district. Also, we have Read with the Cop. What we do with that is that the officer has to, they'll get an email or they'll get an invitation to that classroom. And they'll engage with the students there and they'll read a book to that class. Also, we have Meet a Student, which means that an officer has to meet a student at least once a week or staff, and they're writing to a staffer as well because the staff said that we need to meet them as well because we have a lot of new staff sometimes. So we even enhance that to a staff member as well. But they need to meet that person, tell us about that person. It could be favorite color, favorite food. But that officer, that's the way that, like I said, once again, we're building a relationship. We're getting to know that or that person. And sometimes it just takes that, that moment that it could be that quick five-minute conversation that could change a person's life. I mean, and that's what, I think that's what officers are here for. I mean, to me, it's officer-friendly. I mean, the reason why I want to be an officer is to help people, you know, engage with people, talk to people. So, and that's the biggest part that I want to bring to my, bring to the department. And all my officers now, they're people persons. So they are able to go in any setting. And yes, I am going to brag, but they can. They go to any setting and handle a situation. So, and that's the big thing that we strive on. So, and also we have our Christmas miracle. I don't want to forget that. That was huge for us to be able to support our district, our families, and be able to feed numerous of families and kids for our Christmas and give gifts away. Just that in itself was, was amazing. So those are a lot of things that we do, and let alone mentor. They asked us to start mentoring groups, which we are, assisted with James Taylor. We're going to start that process up, but that's every day for us. You know, I mean, it's, it can be a program, but every day we're mentoring. So it's just not just a specific set group, you know, just every day we're mentoring. I mean, when we're going to a building, we talk to students, we're mentoring. So those are a lot of things that we do throughout this.
And that's awesome. I, I just wanted the community to know all the awesome things that the officers are doing. You know, sometimes people look at the negative things, but we need to let our community know that there are a lot of positive things that the officers and you as the chief is implementing here in Warren Township to have a better relationship with our students and our families. Thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you.
So I just want to say that, you know, when I'm walking around the school district or seeing kids and, and I see you out there or another officer, and I see a student come up and talk to that officer, that to me is a sign that those kids feel comfortable around you. It's not you coming up to them, it's them coming up to you. They feel you or see you as a safe haven, as someone they can approach. And I just think that is so important for now and for into the future as they grow up and out of the school district. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I had one. Julie, you hit what I was going to say right on the nose. You know, when we are in the buildings or we are around the community and we see our officers, there is a lot of time that there's a lot of kind interaction, like how are you? They're approaching and I just think it's a safe place for our kids. And I think our kids do respect our officers. And just knowing how much our officers support and love our kids, I just think it's a great fit. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who put this plan together. I agree that it needs to be looked at every year and adjusted for just keeping it up to date and keeping it where it needs to be. But I just want to thank everyone for all the hard work that's gone into this, the hours, just the collaboration that you had to bring this piece to us. I'm really in support of it. And I think our families and our students will like it as well.
Okay, Chief Pettis, you should be proud. And you can brag. I think you've earned that. You've proved that. And I think it's amazing that this new badge, you know, our officers and you wear that with honor. We have a fantastic program here. And I'm so glad that you're here to, to run it and make sure it's going smoothly to make adjustments as needed. I'm just really thankful to have you here.
Appreciate it. I'm going to piggyback off this. I can't take all the credit for the badge. I got to give it to Dave Prevolson, the print shop, him and Billy, they really assisted me a lot of things. And he came up with that design and I feel, and he's, he's awesome. He's assisted us with a lot of things.
I love it. It means something. It really means something. So, thank you.
And we secretly know that Dave is responsible for many great things in this district, Dave and Billy.
Chief Randy, Randy George, chief, can you hear me?
It's Randy.
Chief Pettis? Okay. Yeah, I'm, if you can hear me okay, the mojo there, that's my face, my body. If you can see it there, I'm in the meeting, but on the phone. Hey, appreciate everything you do, the whole staff. You've always been pleasant when I see you, always a smile. And I appreciate, I mean, always confident and I like, man. So I appreciate it and everything you guys are doing.
Thank you again.
If I may, I would like to also remind you that along with school police officers, we have school security officers, SSOs. And we were the first school district to really establish and create this. And that came out of the need for event worker and then just additional supervision, authority figures. And Chief Pettis and I, you know, sat down and talked about what kind of hybrid officer could we create that we could afford and, and put in front of our students, staff, and community? And we were the first to do it. And I will tell you, I mean, I'm competitive. Everybody in Warren's competitive. We have the best school police department in the state of Indiana.
Yes.
And it's, we get phone calls routinely from other school districts. I get at least one a month to talk about our structure, just talk about how we do things. Because people know that we have a lot of success with our school police programs. Not just the officers, but it's the school safety officers, the mentoring, the partnerships, everything that we create. So we've even had the University of Notre Dame reach out to us and then talk to us about our SSO program. And so it's not just police officers. There is a very comprehensive safety initiative and program that Chief Pettis oversees. And that is even far reaching than this, what this SOP that you're looking at tonight incorporates. So I just wanted to make sure we added that as well.
Well, thank you gentlemen for your time this evening and for all of the other time that you've put into it. So the SOP is a discussion item for tonight, which means that it will be voted on in October, when we will also get to see all of Chief Pettis's wonderful officers in person. If someone is watching this after the fact, any public comments about the SOP or questions or concerns? So if there are a comment for the board, they can be sent to Julie French, our board secretary, and/or myself, but Julie is the correct person there. For the board, if you have comments or concerns, please address myself, Dr. Hanson. And we can always send things through Chief Pettis and our attorney, Andrew Manna. So thank everybody for your time. I am going to call this meeting to a close. And we will see all of your smiling faces again at seven o'clock.
Randi, do you want to do a mic check to see if we can hear you still?
Yeah.
Hey Rachel.
We can hear you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next one, I'll try and another computer.
We're used to that game. We're pretty good at it by now.
It's true.
I sent a message to Dennis Jarrett and I haven't received a reply.
Terry, did you, you can try chatting him too.
That is what I did.
Gym function. Give me to text him.
I'll tell him what to text him.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, seeing a quorum, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I am going to throw it over to Julie French for inspirational moment.
Okay, for this inspirational moment, I think it's best to say that out of the mouths of babes. And we as school people tend to listen to the all of the adults, but sometimes we need to listen to the children. So I'm going to get this started. It's not playing. It is. Oh my, I'm here.
...
Okay. Let me pull it back to start.
Hello, I'm Dr. Khalid Mubin and welcome to the 2020-2021 school year. As we all know, we are living in unprecedented times and I believe it's appropriate for me to begin with one of my favorite poems, "The Road Not Taken" by Robert Frost. Two roads diverged in a yellow wood, and sorry I could not travel both. And be one traveler long I stood, and looked down one as far as I could.
I got this stuck. Have you heard of kid president? Well, I kid superintendent. And I think we all need a pep talk. The past couple of months haven't been easy, huh? A global pandemic, politics, social unrest, earthquakes, by your NATO's Tiger King! That show is not what I thought it was about. Your glasses fogging up when you wear a mask. Fighting on toilet paper? The unmute and mute button! You're on you! Spider, butterflies, desert locusts, and murder hornets. I mean, where do they come from, man? You get the idea. 2020 has been kicking our butts. I guess they butts, right? It's okay to feel overwhelmed right now. Or anxious. Or nervous about remote learning. Get bit moody's across, by the way. Maybe you're worried about students. I'm worried about myself and everybody else. But remember, we're all doing our best weekend, and that's all that matters. But remember, we're all doing our best weekend, and that's all that matters. Kids aren't looking for perfection. We're just looking for you to be present. I know that because I'm a kid. So let's be good humans. Those of you that support love fish, and sprinkle kindness. By the way, I hate sprinkles. And let's give each other grace, not grief. We're all in this together, and we've got to support each other. Eh, hugs! But you know this already, because that's what people do. You're resilient and resourceful. When times get tough, you know how to pull together. No cap. And there's still plenty of good stuff in the world, right? Like salmonella scratch. I see. And Lizzo, my mom likes her music a lot. A lot! And funny TikTok videos. And Sharky, you gotta love those. And we've got you. You are good, those scrap that you are great. We need you here. No matter your job, you each have something special and amazing to offer. You can do virtually anything. Get it? Virtually? It's a joke. Seriously, you could do this. You are the champion Peter Pearson was talking. I believe in you. And I know you'll stay RST proud no matter the distance. It's kind of like Doc was trying to say. Two roads diverged in a wood. And right now, we're gonna take the one less traveled. You know, and try to territory and all. I know it might get a little scary, actually a lot scary. But you got this. Put on your favorite fuzzy socks. No one can see your feet on Google meets. But definitely throw your pants. And press forward with a positive attitude. It's gonna make all the difference.
So I would say, everybody hang in there. We're in this together, and you're all doing us proud. So let me stop it. So that's it.
Thank you so much, Julie, for that moment of inspiration. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Hanson for his superintendent's report.
President Burke, members of the board, can I just replay that video for my report tonight? I love that. And that kid at the end, that was the kid president. He's all grown up now. Today is the 29th. We just finished the 29th day of school. And you know, it's been our goal to win each day. Obviously, it's been a challenging start to the school year. You'll hear later tonight from Ryan Russell and Pam Griffin, updates on our virtual and in-person models. To start the year, we had 4,300 students or individual students that chose the virtual model, which leads me to share that our window for our families to switch the model that they're currently in to a different model is now open. And that will be open until Monday, September 21st at 3 o'clock. Each school has a unique form that families must fill out in order to request that change. We will not be accepting changes after 3 o'clock on Monday. I know that sounds harsh. But all of these changes will be requiring staffing adjustments. It's been a goal of mine that our staff have a fall break this year. So some parents may be asking why we've opened this window in the sixth week of the first quarter. It's really to get a good handle on what that staffing might look like and what changes might be needed. You know, one of the things, it may feel like time is moving slow, but when we're working with thousands of kids and individual schedules, it takes a lot of time and manpower. This week is anti-bullying week. I want to commend Allison Woods and her team, who created a great collection of lessons and activities for our students K8 to embrace in anti-bullying. At the high school level, our students will interact with Safe School videos and lessons that Brian Woods and Allison worked together on getting that. So excited that we're evolving in that area. Next week is College Go Week. Under Laura Buckwright's leadership, she has some great activities again, if you remember that from last year. Look forward to hearing that update. This week kicked off Hispanic Heritage Month. If you have not seen some of the things that our athletic department is doing at the high school and all of our schools are doing to highlight and showcase Hispanic Heritage Month, I would encourage you to look at that. And as always, I list the activities that I've been involved in the last month. I do want to highlight the first one. Team from Warren, Ryan Russell, Allison Woods, James Taylor, and Masimba Taylor and myself are part of a 21 district Equity Action Cohort that meets on Saturdays. So thank you, team, for giving up your Saturdays to engage in that. But it's 100 educators across the country who are really looking at equitable practices in public education and addressing that. So that started last Saturday. And I just want to end by saying again to all of our staff, teachers, and staff, thank you for all that you've done to get us to day 29. It's been, we have more wins than losses. So in those days that didn't go well, we've learned a lot. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Tim. We're gonna go and move on to board comments, starting with Terry Amos.
Good evening, everyone. It's hard to believe we almost have a whole 30 days underneath our belt. It's looking bright. Just wanted to tell everyone, just welcome. And we know times are rough. Julie, I loved your inspirational moment. It was so much needed, and I'm hoping that our teachers and our administrators and all of our staff really felt that love and that they can connect with that. But I don't have much to say, but welcome, everyone, and stick around. It's gonna be a great night.
Thank you so much, Terry. That brings us to Julie.
I would just like to say welcome to everybody as well. It's been a long 30 days and a fast 30 days at the same time. And so just hang in there, and fall break's coming soon.
Thank you so much, Julie. Randy?
Yeah, welcome everybody as well. And like Julie, Terry, everybody else, commend the district tremendously. 29 days, staff, teachers, getting through this pandemic the way we are. I don't think I'd expect where we're at. And again, it's because of you guys exemplifying that true warrior ship. Eventually, we'll get back where we were, where we left off, and hopefully it's pretty soon. Thanks again.
Thank you so much, Randy. Lynn?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome this evening. I have a couple of things I'd like to report. Last Friday, I had the honor to attend a check presentation at Hawthorne Elementary School. The Warren Arts and Education Foundation received a grant from IU Health for $21,000 that will help to support the foundation's Right to Read program, which supports efforts to continue reading for children in kindergarten through third grade who have been impacted by disruptions in their learning due to COVID-19. So I feel like with technology playing such an active role in our everyday lives right now that I can't honestly think of a better time to have received a grant that focuses on reading and that places resources in books in the hands of our children here in Warren Town Show. So I think that's pretty awesome. So thank you, IU Health. The other thing I wanted to mention is on Monday, I have a senior at the high school that's playing tennis that some of you know. He came home with the new student athlete backpack and t-shirt, which is always a big highlight. And the back of the t-shirt this year says, the theme for this year is "Listen, Learn, and Love: WC Family." And I really believe that these words are absolutely perfect for this year of 2020 and accurately reflect the qualities that are needed to help us get through challenging times in our lives. So even though I'm definitely not a student athlete, I think these are things that I can definitely bring to my everyday life as we're trying to all get through the not normals. So just keep those in mind, "listen, learn, and love," and that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Lynn? Gloria?
Well, hello, everyone. I just wanted to mention that I had some parents to express to me that they had difficulty with the virtual learning. And hopefully, tonight, Pam Griffin and the superintendent will be able to address some of those problems and maybe give us some outlooks on how we can handle some of the problems and concerns that parents may be having with our virtual learning. We want the parents to understand that we are trying to address these issues and to hang in there. The parents are saying that virtual learning has been very difficult for them. So hopefully, we can get some explanation and some help tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gloria. So for myself, welcome to everyone who's here. We appreciate your attendance. Much like Lynn, I have a middle school athlete, not a high school athlete. And they've finally been able to start, and they had their first meets this week. And it was, it was just really nice seeing them be able to compete in a safe fashion and do the thing that they love and have their bonding with their teams. And I know that extracurriculars that are non-athletics are starting up and getting going. We've been having those conversations as well. And it's just, it's so good to see the district and the teachers in the district and the administrators focus on the academics, but also the whole child and those teams and all of those things outside of school that really make schools successful for our children and makes them happy and eager to learn. And so that was just really wonderful to see. And so Julie, do we have any board correspondence? Okay, we do not. We also do not have any yellow cards, correct? Okay, and that brings us to Hannah Morrison with the city announcements. Thank you for joining us today, Hannah.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for having me. It's really good to see everybody again. I definitely missed you all these last few months, so it's exciting to be able to jump on and see you all for a little while. We have just a couple announcements, things going on at the city right now. The biggest one that, you know, we're still working to push the word out about and could use all the help we could get is that we are still distributing rental assistance funds to those who are in need of them. Anyone who is in need of accessing those funds can go to indirent.org. There is an application process to fill out for both the tenant and the landlord. We are processing those in batches of 1,000 right now. Currently, we are caught up on our backlog from the previous infusion of dollars that came from the first CARES Act into our housing and rental assistance fund there. And we are now taking in new applicants again. So if you know of anyone who can be taking advantage of this program, please send them our way. We want to make sure that we're connecting as many families to this resource as we possibly can, knowing full well that, you know, even with the extension of funds, you know, we're limited, and we want to get people served as quickly as possible. So don't wait. If you know you're going to be needing those funds, please, please, please fill out the application sooner rather than later so that we can get that handled for you. A couple other things going on. Construction is still underway on the Pennsy Trail. I know a number of our Warren families have gotten to use that throughout the late summer and early fall as portions of that are already open. Construction is going to be continuing through the fall, hoping for a ribbon cutting. Hopefully, you know, maybe in the spring of next year, if everything stays warm and on track. They're doing some minor bridge repairs between Post and German Church at this point for the continuation of the trail and continuing to do brush cleanup in that construction as well. So on that same note, just as we're working to push the messaging out there, there are no motorized vehicles on the trail. Please do not ride golf carts on it or electric scooters or anything like that. It is for hiking, biking, walking, and other family activities. We're just making sure that we can keep everyone as safe as we possibly can while they utilize this really wonderful amenity we're working on right now. You may see an increase in park rangers on the trail over the next few weeks as they're working to enforce that, just to remind people to keep. Golf carts have been our biggest issue right now. So we're just gently reminding people that, hey, you know, you can't have those on here. We want to keep all of our families safe as they utilize this amenity. So just as a general reminder to our families as well, please keep those off there. In a similar parks conversation, our spray grounds are actually open through the end of the month. Usually, they close after Labor Day, but due to the fact that it was 84 degrees today, and we recognize that with e-learning and with our family schedules, we're trying to keep as many safe and socially distant opportunities for our families to engage with our parks as possible available for as long as we can. So those are gonna remain open through September 30th. So if you or anyone you know would like to go cool off or take advantage of any of those, we have a number of fabulous spray grounds here on the east side that while our pools are still closed, it is still warm out right now. Please get out there and enjoy those. They're a really fantastic amenity that we love seeing our family and friends use. Just a couple other things that we had going on. Really, the last one is the budget introduction was brought forward before the city council a few weeks ago. Anyone who is interested in the complete budget breakdown and where the priorities for the city are looking to be allocated. It hasn't been approved yet. It's just been submitted for council review at this point. All of that is available at indie.gov. Some of the highlights are increased infrastructure spending, increased infrastructure spending, and increased public safety dollars specifically for body cams for our police officers. We are currently in the process of rolling out body cams on East District as we speak. Over the next six to eight weeks, all of our IMPD officers should be equipped with those as well as the technology to store the data that they receive from there. They're currently in the process of updating that with all of their officers right now. And it takes a good amount of hours to just get one camera set up and get everything backed up to the cloud and the training for those as well. So they are doing that on a rolling basis, and then it will be rolled out to the rest of IMPD too. So starting here on the east side, which is a really fantastic opportunity for us. And there are going to be additional line items in the budget. If anyone's interested, all of that is still available on indie.gov. And your city councilors are really looking to hear from their constituents about those priorities and where they lie so that they can make sure they're voting in their constituents' favor. So please reach out to them with any questions, comments, questions, comments, and concerns you might have about that. That being said, I know I rattled through some of those pretty quickly. That's all I have this evening. Do you guys have any questions? I know I haven't seen you guys in a few months. Is there a buildup of questions or anything? Awesome.
Hannah, thank you so much for joining us. It was really nice to see your face. And with that, we are going to move on to our consent agenda, which I just minimized accidentally, my apologies, which consists of our approval of minutes, our financial report, payroll claim, claim register, and electronic payments, year-to-date summary of fund balances, and the human resources report, as well as permission to accept gifts and grants. Do I have a motion?
I will make the motion.
Okay, Terry has made the motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Gloria has seconded it, so I will give us to Julie for a roll call.
Hey, Terry.
Yay.
Rachel?
Yay.
Randy?
Yay.
Lynn? Gloria?
Yay.
And I'm a yay. It passes.
Thank you so much. With that, we will move on to our reports, starting with Ryan Russell.
All right, good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board and those in attendance, both live and virtually here tonight, just to provide a brief update on our in-person students here in Moore Township. As we start the school year in such unprecedented times. Doesn't like me. All right, let's do this again. All right, good evening again. Here tonight, just to provide a brief update, brief update for in-person status here as we start such an unprecedented, unprecedented school year here in 2021. As I did last month, just wanted to provide an overview of our in-person numbers. And again, I know it says in-person, and I'm going to continue to say in-person, but these are our counts of our students who are actually physically present in the building. So this in-person students K5, obviously attend five days a week. And then in-person students, sixth grade, sixth through 12, these are the students that are in-person on the alternating days. Last month, that number was slightly lower. It was just over 6,800 as we work towards our critical day on Friday, the 18th of ADM Day, which is obviously critical for our funding. That number continues to climb and that number gets larger each and every single day, but we're just north of 7,000 students now that are in-person here in our schools. I wanted to, for the primary focus of the in-person update tonight, just really, last month I brought to you just everything we were doing in response to COVID procedures. And obviously COVID has been a critical component of how we prepared for the safe re-entry of school. But I wanted to shift my focus, not because we're not still taking COVID precautions or students and staff aren't doing a wonderful job with that, but just because we have started to, as Dr. Hanson mentions, we just completed our 29th day of school. 29 days of school after we were out of school for 142 days, I think it was. Obviously, those transitions are fully in effect. Our students, obviously, were happy on day one and they're still happy to be back. And we're actually starting to progress forward with the implementation of the strategic plan, which I know you guys know quite well. And more specifically, I wanted to speak towards our journey of a graduate activities and opportunities that we've had the advantage to dive fully into now. Journey of a graduate, as you know, turns, reflects a measuring stick for us of what certainly we want to accomplish for our graduates, for all of our students in Moore Township. And ultimately, those six skills/dispositions are what is critical for us and our focus moving forward. To start this year off, obviously, we've had to, I've certainly referenced this to Dr. Hanson before, there's no greater collaborative or critical thinking effort other than starting school this year. That's talking about adults, right, and what adults have had to do, what that communication and everything had to look like from a student, a staff, a community perspective. And we really wanted the opportunity to start to go deeper, to start to talk about how some of those dispositions look more specifically in our classrooms. For the past couple of weeks, we've been focusing on collaboration for a few reasons. One, I personally believe that collaboration is one of the most misunderstood terms because we use it so much in a lot of contexts. So like any skill, whether we're teaching adults, whether we're teaching children, we're teaching what collaboration means. Some of the critical components to that are, it is individual participation, but it's not group work. You could have specific group work that would meet or merit being called collaboration, but typically when you hear people refer to collaboration, a lot of times it's not really anchoring itself on some of those fundamental principles that we talk about. We define it in short as working with others to achieve, achieve better results. So those aren't discussions. Those aren't just simply dividing up tasks and coming back together. And we've been teaching this through, initially through one specific protocol that we call step ladder protocol. That step ladder protocol requires everyone to individually reflect first and participate in the activity before they come together to build consensus on something. Critical for us to do that, just because how many times have we, maybe from our past school experiences, or I'll speak directly to my school experiences, has a teacher said, let's collaborate on a project and we all start staring up and down at each other, figuring out who's going to do the mountain of the work, right? Like what can I do or what can I not do and still get by with this? So teaching our students and our adult and staff, the true meaning of collaboration for what that looks like is where we started our focus. What we realized really quickly was that you can't collaborate without communicating. And if you're truly going to collaborate to achieve better results, there's critical thinking within that. We've started to have those conversations about how citizenship and participating within that requires both citizenship and resilience as well. And at the end of the day, typically as we're collaborating around projects or anything else that could have any impact for whether it be results or effectiveness in general circles around content knowledge as well. We know that these skills are important to teach both in isolation, but both make those connections to ensure that students and staff, and I keep on referencing students and staff because these opportunities are opportunities we want for all of our staff here in Moore Township, all of our students here in Moore Township. It's not just a student-facing vision. It's a community and just all of us together working to make those things a reality. So I didn't want to bore you with COVID details and I didn't want to give you, let you know how many masks we purchased, or as fun as it is to see cute pictures of kids with all the supplies that they want. I did want to focus the conversation on some of the specific goals that we have set within the strategic plan and how we're moving forward with those in-person more specifically. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about in-person, even if they're regardless of what they are, so.
I don't see any questions, but I want to give people a moment more. Are there any from the board? Seeing no questions.
I'm going to ask a question. Mr. Russell.
Yes, ma'am.
So just thinking about how the school day is working, I guess I'm thinking with elementary kids, do you get a feel that things are moving smoothly in the, in the schools?
I do. I think that, you know, we're all creatures of habit and the routine of school was healthy for us all. To get back, I'll speak for myself as an adult, coming back into a work environment and having those relationships with the adults I see each and every single day and being able to connect with them on a level that's not just virtual was certainly healthy for me and refreshing. We've seen the same thing for our students. Our students have been incredibly eager to come back. They've been incredibly eager to be engaged as much as I know our students certainly love the opportunities to do everything virtually. They still crave that human connection. And that's one foundation of both virtual and in-person is human connection. And we, we do find that to be a little bit more natural face-to-face. But from an operation perspective of what we're doing with transporting students, feeding students, teaching students, supporting students and families, addressing both academic and social emotional needs. I couldn't be more thrilled with the work of our teachers and our administrators. And this has been a challenging year. We all reference that over and over again. It's been especially challenging for teachers as they navigate this new era. But, you know, I know we were in a building together on Friday and just seeing those kids back and regardless of what's going on, the joy in their eyes. You know, for anyone who wonders what in-person looks like or if it can be a support to students or if there are too many distractions, the answer is we're meeting our students right where they are. We're excited to have them back. And, you know, overwhelmingly, our staff's excited to be back as well. So we've been very blessed with a lot of resources, not only just through our planning, but through the community as well to make that process smooth.
Ryan, I have a question real quick. As far as feeding the kids on their virtual days, is everything going okay with that? I mean, they're just taking a bag home with them, right?
So virtuals, both all virtual students and students on the alternating day schedule have the opportunity
Right.
to pick up those meals. And yes, they get, we have those, that Morehead set up for those pickups. And yes, they take those meals home and they're able to do that there, so.
I wanted to ask two questions. The first one is I am happy that we have a lot of safety procedures in place. And with those procedures in place, how is it affecting our attendance with our students? Because, you know, when they show symptoms and things of that nature, they have to be out of school. So is that affecting our attendance drastically in any way?
It's not from a quantitative point of view. It's not affecting or impacting our attendance negatively just because we have the, any and a Department of Education has set up new attendance codes for us this year. Those new attendance codes reflect some of the opportunities we may have if a student is ill, even if it's not COVID-related, if a student's required to be quarantined, even if it's not. So we're allowed to designate a student basically present for COVID-19 reasons. And that allows the student to continue to engage academically online, even if they are an in-person student and they get marked present from attendance point of view, from an attendance point of view. It also allows our students, it keeps that student connected with the teacher they know best. So instead of transferring a student who may have to be out because they were a close contact for 14 days, so instead of transferring them to a whole new teacher who they don't know and they don't know the routines, they stay engaged with their in-person teacher through Canvas and other online activities so they can still submit work and be able to participate that way. As you know, we do have those isolation and quarantine numbers posted on our website, just so you can see the quantities of those. But we are taking those precautions, obviously following the guidelines of the Marion County Health Department and such. So if you have a family member who's ill and, you know, we can't specify what the illness is and it may fall within COVID, we take every precaution to make sure that that student is quarantined or if they're showing any symptoms to be isolated until we would potentially get a negative test before they, we welcome them back.
And secondly, I like the idea where Superintendent Hanson has been giving reports to the teachers and things of kids that may be affected so that they can feel comfortable with how they will deal with it. Have you had any feedback from teachers on whether they are struggling with any particular things? Do you get any surveys from the teachers to find out how they're, how they're coping? Because sometimes we focus on the students and forget about the caretakers, which are the teachers. So have you done a survey and got some feedback from teachers on what's working, what's not working? And, you know, things of that nature.
Yes, so we haven't done a formal survey, but we do have some longstanding practices that in collaboration with the Warren Education Association where we meet for monthly discussion meetings where teachers have the opportunity to bring any, whether it's a concern, whether it's questions or clarification on anything. Our building principals meet monthly as well with their building reps to address those. I know that our principals and other building leaders have dedicated a lot of time just to conversations about any concerns that they may have from a, whether it's COVID-related, whether it's instructional-related, whether it's virtual-related. There's a lot of topics going on, just so we hear those, we're able to address those more formally. So a lot of times, as we look to find solutions, obviously, we engage with teachers to help create those solutions because they're the ones doing the work and they're the ones supporting our students. And the best way to support students is to support teachers, as you know, so.
Do we have a parent survey so that we can get a survey of parents? And so that, you know, I guess I like surveys so that, you know, we can get feedback from parents and teachers on what they think about how we're conducting things and that maybe we can, you know, take a look at what we're doing and what we might need to do.
Yeah, absolutely. One thing we do have coming out starting next week, this is a staff and student survey. So we're surveying students as well through Panorama. So we have a lot of elements in there that are going to get, gather some baseline data for us to look at how we're achieving our strategic plan. There are specific COVID-related questions and feedback that we're seeking from staff and students. We're delaying the parent survey a couple weeks so that survey window happens over parent-teacher conference time as well, so we can really promote it. Parents will have the opportunity to submit that survey. And there's both specific questions where they'll ask us to give ratings and there's specific open-ended questions where they can provide more general feedback. So we have the ability to respond to that. So look, long story short, have we done a survey? No. Is there one in the works? There's one that'll start actually next week for students and staff. And then as we promote that to the community at large, we're really trying to promote, if we could use all the help we can get to promote the completion of the survey because we really want to use that as an anchor point for us as we're making future decisions, whether it's about in-person, virtual, or whatever, whatever thing we may talk about. But it's a good piece to let people give feedback so we can know what if any adjustments or what to keep doing, what's going well and what might not be going as well as it needs to be.
I agree. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions for Ryan? Not seeing any. Ryan, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate the presentation. And we will move on to Pam Griffin with the virtual update. Like the two of you are going to be tag teaming for several months doing this, so it's good to have.
I will do that. In mine. Thank you. Yep. Try sharing it again, see if it pops up this time. Okay, all righty. There we go. Do I go to Google? I am Google.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Thank you, President Burke, Dr. Hanson and board members. It has been a long time since I've had the honor of standing in front of you in the committee, so I appreciate that very much. Tonight, I come to you with a virtual update. And ironically, as you just watched me fumble through the virtual setup of this. As you know, in our classrooms, when we have our teachers and our students working through different screens and multiple screens, we can accomplish a great deal using this technology. And so we still have a lot to learn and I'm excited to learn along with our staff as we do that. Real quick update on virtual numbers. We have not changed. We have not changed very much since I stood in front of you um last week. I think we've only moved like less than ten kids. Um, we've stayed very stable. Once we added our waitlist families. We have been able to um accommodate all of our families as well as accommodate new-to-Warn families. Who may have expressed an interest in um that option as well. And so we're very excited about how stable um our program has been over the month. So that we can meet the needs of our community members who require um different options. In order for their students to achieve and receive their education while they're also taking care of their needs at home. As Dr. Hanson mentioned, we are beginning to offer the opportunity for our families to communicate to us. Whether they are ready for a change, to return home to their homeschools, or if they'd like to try the virtual option. As he shared with you, the window will be closing on the twenty-first. Last month, when I um shared our virtual update, one of the things that I shared with you was that just in K three-six. We have fifty-six classroom teachers and with the support of our exceptional learning program. We have seventy-one teachers that support our students' grades kindergarten through six. Um, to ensure that they are having their needs met, whether they're a high-ability student, a special education student, or a student who's learning a new language. And so when you think about the shift of s- almost sixty classroom teachers. And um being able to accommodate our families as they express their desire and their need for a change. At the second nine weeks in grades K through eight, um, this is going to be um an incredibly important um transition for us. We know that we learned a lot in the beginning as we were launching. Um, a lot of people have talked about how this has been a very challenging year. One of the things that I'm most proud of, even though there were a lot of um ruts before we were able to hit our groove. Um, was the fact that once we did hit our groove, really wonderful things began to happen. But we also through this process learned um how much lift and effort and instruction. Is part of getting students ready to be successful in a classroom when they're using different types of technology and online curriculum. And so as we launched Canvas this year, to really make sure that our students have equitable access to their curriculum. As well as ease of access to that information, so that they can access work, access their teachers, participate in their Zoom classrooms. But also, most importantly, submit and share classroom work, work in environments with their classmates. We've learned the power of the learning management system. And that was one of the things that I also shared with you um last month when I was here. We visited a teacher's virtual classroom. So that you could see within her classroom how she'd set it up so that students could easily access their schedules. Their manipulatives for math class, um, they would know what Zoom links to to click on when it was time for their full group instruction. As well as what Zoom links to click on for small group instruction. And so today, what I wanted to highlight for you are three different supporting routines that teachers had for their students this week. The first example that I have for you comes from first grade. In our kindergarten and first grade classrooms, we run AM and PM schedules. And what that means is for our kindergartners and first graders, they have an option of attending class in the morning with their teacher or in the PM. And so on this particular day, the teacher shared with students and their parents in advance on Canvas what their routines would be for the day. So that students and parents would know um what their focus was going to be. In the middle, I've included a third grade daily schedule. And that teacher has provided her virtual direct instruction schedule for her students. Who um could have been, for example, on their black cohort day. As well as the application day expectation for routines for the students on gold cohort day. And so as you can see, we're pretty um like focused on a schedule. But it is, there is a little bit of flexibility. I mean, obviously, we are not just onboarding um kids to school. But we also know that with technology, sometimes as students are logging in or there is a personal need at home. There are a couple of things we want to make sure they don't forget, like lunch. And so we do go ahead and build those times into their schedule so that we can keep them in a routine. So that when they return to school, um, there still is that understanding that that's an important part of the day. And so um as you look at that, you can tell that we are participating in our writer's workshop. As well as working on personalized playlists through their independent workstations. So that students are also getting their need, their needs met. As Mr. Russell said when he was up here, we're meeting our students where they are. And we are doing that not just in person, but we're also doing that virtually. Especially as it relates to their practices and instruction. Application day is really important because it's their opportunity to practice everything that they work with their, on their teacher. As well as to take some safe risks and to show what they know. And uh also maybe struggle a little bit, so they have some good questions the next day for their teachers. And then lastly, I've included a virtual instructional schedule for a sixth-grade team. Our fifth and sixth-grade teachers actually wrote, students, excuse me, rotate through three teachers. They have a math teacher, an English teacher, and a teacher who teaches science and social studies. And so as our students are rotating through their day. One of the things that we appreciate the most about Canvas is that our students um can look at their schedule. Within their learning management system and all of their classroom dashboards are right there. And so our students can move through Canvas and um, once they understand what their schedule is. They can click on to those courses and have access to, again, their Zoom links. The example again that I shared with you last week was from a fifth and sixth-grade math teacher. And so the routines here, again, do not change in regards to the time. But when you look in their Canvas pages, based on what their curriculum maps are, what their learning objectives are. And also the needs that they need to cover during small group instruction. Those things do look different within their schedule within Canvas. As you know, also in grades seven through twelve, we have the the luxury. And I call it that because I know that a lot of people have asked us, how are you doing this? But we've really worked hard um to make sure that our middle school students who are virtual are following a schedule as well. And they have access to their courses um that keep them in line curricularly. So that when they return to school, they're on the same pace as their peers. And so our students follow their schedule within Canvas as well, so that they can log in. What is unique about our seven-through-twelve schedules, especially if you know someone who has a middle schooler or a high schooler. Um, within Canvas, it may not say periods one, two, three, four, and five. The numbers may look a little bit different as we build our schedules. But that's just to ensure that our students have access to their teachers and um their curriculum through Canvas. So that um there is no issue with connecting to their teacher during that time. Are there any questions I can take for you?
Um, I would like to know um for the students that are virtual.
Yes, ma'am.
What do you have in place for those students that are having difficulty completing their assignments? That is, that is not um, that they have to do separately from direct instruction. From the teacher.
And so part of application day is um, we know that when we assign our students work, can you hear me okay? This Gloria, okay, thank you. Part of um when we assign our assignments on application day, we understand that there is going to be a productive like struggle. Because our students are learning new material. And so our students do have access to communicating um with their teachers um through Canvas. As well as through um their email. But most importantly, for students who um are working within um their small groups with their students. With their teachers when they return for their um direct instructional time. Um, because their small groups are pretty small within their um small group instruction time. The teacher is really able to work with those students to take a look at what their specific needs are. But also, as the students are submitting their activities on their application day. Um, oftentimes, the way we've set up some of our activities, that data gets calculated pretty quickly. So that teachers can be responsive to it. And so the work that students actually produce on their application day. Allows teachers to be forward-thinking and to know in advance what they need to focus on during their small instruction time with their students. And also if they need to dedicate some one-on-one time with our students on their Friday academic enrichment day.
So when they have to do their independent work, um, if they have questions or confused about how to do it. Do they have to wait until they have direct instruction from the teacher? Or is the teacher readily available through technology to answer their questions so that they can finish their work?
So the teacher most likely isn't going to be readily available during instructional time because they're teaching other students. I know that our teachers work very hard to be responsive during their off times and also during their break time. Um, but like I said, when they assign their application day work, there is an expectation that the students are going to have. Like I said, I use the term productive struggle. And the reason I use that is because the students do have access to um resources. As well as um the opportunity to take a look at um the instruction that um teachers provide from the previous day. For example, their guided notes and things like that. Um, but those quick checks for um understanding that teachers build into their application day. Allow the teachers to be as responsive as like really, really quickly as they as they have that need. I know that our teachers work really hard when they get an email from a parent. Or they receive a communication from their students, especially if it's on seesaw, to get back to them as soon as possible. But as I just shared, um, Ms. Gloria, that when they are teaching and they're working with their other students. They can't be on the spot available to answer an immediate question.
And one last question.
Yes, ma'am.
For now, for now.
Okay.
Um, you know, because I mentioned survey before. Um, was there a survey uh done when the grades came out? Uh, to see how well students performed? Um, I'm interested in uh did we have students with a lot of low grades? Or were students um, did they have high grades? Because I just want to know that they're not falling behind in their work. So did you take a um, a survey of what the grades look like as far as the students are concerned? Because we just had grades to to come out recently.
Midterm grades?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so um one of, in terms of like, have we surveyed our parents? Is that your question, ma'am?
No, um, I wanted you, I wanted to know, did you take a look at the students' grades that were virtual? To see if there was a drop in their grades, whether their grades were low or whether they were acceptable.
Oh, so in our elementary grade levels, grades, um, in our elementary grades, they, our students um do not receive. Like traditional letter grades, but no, I have personally not looked at the midterm grades of our grades five through twelve students. To see if there was a drop or um between now. And what they may have um shown in February of last school year. No, ma'am, I have not done that.
Well, um, I would really uh like to know that because, you know, that's important to see if they're struggling with this virtual. Because, you know, we don't want them to get uh behind grade, I mean, grade level. Um, we want to make sure that they stay on grade level. We don't want them next year to be a year behind because uh they weren't able to handle the virtual learning. So it would be interesting to try to keep a little survey of how the students are doing grade-wise. So that we can see whether it's actually working.
Alright, thank you. Are there any questions?
I have one.
And I have one.
Terry, go on ahead.
Alright, um, the middle schedule that we're seeing, is this a K through five schedule?
Um, that happens to be a third grade schedule for this week.
My question is, um, is our virtual school every day that the teachers meeting with our students every day? Because I'm questioning a virtual direct instruction and then an application day.
So our virtual teachers in grades two through six meet with their students every other day. So on um for our students who are in the gold cohort, they meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays for direct instruction. And Mondays and Wednesdays are their application days. And then our students who are in the black cohort days, they meet with their teachers for direct instruction on Mondays and Wednesdays. And then their application days are Tuesday and Thursday.
Thank you.
Pam, I've got a question.
Sure.
Um, so back to Gloria's there, so if we compare February of twenty with September of twenty. It's a different level. I mean, it's not the same class. How would we better compare and do a analysis on grades? From February of twenty to a new year? We wouldn't be able to, right?
Um, I think that um. I think that there is always an opportunity to take a look at the previous year's um data. In regards to how students are performing um every nine weeks as well as at their midterm. Um, we do have um assessments and things that we give to our students to measure their progress. As we're moving through our curriculum maps. And so.
True that, great, Bob.
Yes, sir. And so I do think that there is a way to look at their progress and um take a, if there's a way to like look at a, like a. What I would call a um, like a, an analysis where we could find a a commonality. Um, but in regards to, like, I I understand her concern of making sure that our virtual students aren't um, like their grades aren't. Because of a new model, right? And so um, I definitely think that there are things that I can take a look at and also um checking with the team on, sir.
Right, the progression, gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank, uh, thank you, Randy, uh, because uh Pam, the reason I suggested that is because, you know, we have um. This new um thing that we're working on, journey of a graduate.
Mm-hmm.
So even though we are doing our instruction different, you know, I know that we're um trying to, you know. Get everything under control in in person and virtual. But we don't want to lose sight of journey of a graduate. And part of journey of a graduate is monitoring our students to make sure that they maintain good grades. So that they can be successful. And we need to start that, um, well, you know, the elementary grades. They have more of an advantage because they get more one-on-one. But when you start moving up, we need to make sure we closely monitor that. Because we don't want to see their grades drop and them not to be successful. And we want to make sure that our graduation rate increases and not decrease. And we don't want students falling behind grade level-wise. So it's very crucial that we establish some kind of strategy where we can monitor this. So that we can uh address the problem before the problem gets out of control.
I agree with that. Um, what I would also say, and and thank you for bringing up the journey of the graduate, as Mr. Russell shared. Um, part of the journey of the graduate is um looking at the skills that our students are able to achieve during this journey as well. Um, grades are very important. And so um, as I shared earlier, I appreciate your comment because I do think that's something that um we should monitor carefully. Because in the past, we have always monitored that carefully. But with the importance and the emphasis of making sure that we are making um every effort and every attempt. To ensure that our students who graduate from Warren Central have incredible skills to support them in their journey. As they they go into our communities and they move into um service or um further education. Whatever their next steps may be, the skills that they attain during that time are also just as valuable. And so um I do, as you were sharing about monitoring, I think that it's important to monitor the grades. As well as it is just as important to monitor the skills that we are working so hard to develop in our students, our staff, ourselves. So that we can be excellent models of that.
Um, one of the things too, we just started NWA testing last week uh for K students, both in-person and virtual. And really, that data is going to tell us a lot about where our students are. Um, Pam and Ryan will bring that data back to the board um to share that information with you. I'm really looking forward to seeing what that data shows. To me, that's really going to be a strong indicator of where our kids are. Um, and and kind of really where they compare to other students in the in the country. So we'll have that data. Um, those students are still testing until next week.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll have that data for you um at the October or November board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And I was gonna, and I was gonna.
Okay, I was gonna say, along with that, on the NWA, you're able to compare your virtual to your in-class kids as well to see that they're equal. And I also think in that respect that teachers, at least I think my husband has the ability for his class, his classes, to look at the kids and look at their grades to see where they're at, to see if, if it's his class they're struggling with or if it's, if it's all the classes. So is that the same here? I'm assuming that the teachers have the ability to look at their kids to see how they did last year. And, and if this kid was an exemplary student last year and they're struggling this year, then they know there's a problem. I, I think our teachers are, are very professional and very good at what they do. And I, I think that that would not be a stone they would not look under, you know what I mean?
And our parents too.
Yeah.
Got a lot of response to parent view, and that has been really exciting to be able to have that engagement with our families as they access parent view, as they're monitoring their students' progress as well. But our teachers really have appreciated that.
Yeah. I was curious, I, you know, I've been thinking, I've been doing all this and watching and paying attention, but the one thing that kind of slipped under my radar a little bit was related arts. How are they doing related arts virtually?
So right now, what, in regards to related arts and their access to art and music, the students in the virtual program in K through six have access to choice activities that they're able to participate in during that time. Our seventh and eighth graders are participating in some like variation of courses as well within their schedules. We are about to launch our music program, and so we're really excited about that.
Cool.
And so we are, we have a lot of excellent things coming up the second nine weeks to see how we're able to support that because the arts are very important to us.
They are, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I have another question.
Terry, Lynn had a question, I'll get back to you.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say how happy I am to see you here this evening. And thank you so much for all your hard work with our virtual school.
Thank you.
I know it's been a lot, and I know our families here really appreciate it. You know, the kinks will get worked out, you know, just keep working hard at it, and I appreciate all you've done. And it's great to see you.
It's been an honor to build this and to work on it. Like I said, I know it's not been easy, but it fulfills that really important need in our community. And so, like I said, it's been an honor and a privilege. And it's been worth every sweat drop, tear, stress, or hair loss. I mean, it's been worth it. Terry, did you have a question?
Yes, I was just wondering, do we still have kids who are virtual? Not logging on every day, and how are we approaching that? And second of all, are we having technology difficulties that are problems for kids to get online? Is Canvas always being up and running? Has it crashed?
So, so to answer your first question, I think that, you know, in every school engagement, like self-selecting engagement can be a little bit of a challenge. But in terms of students not being able to access, one of the things that has been very successful is the parent and caregiver help desk that Kent Schroeder's department and Eddie Sasser is here tonight, that they have worked to make sure that our students, teachers and parents have access to, so that we can help them solve any technology problems they have. And we also have in-person support every day at Morehead Community Resource Center. And so when we are coming across a situation in the virtual setting where we have students who are not logging in, the teachers will take a look at if the students are submitting work. If they're submitting work, they continue to work with the family to see if there's a reason why the student isn't logging on. If it's a connectivity issue or an issue with the device, they work pretty quickly to help that family resolve that. There have been a few situations in which even Mr. Taylor, our Director of Student Services, and his interns have offered to help families get those things resolved in the event that they can't get to some, a school or something like that. If we have an issue where we know a, a student may not be logging in and it's an issue of motivation, we are working with homeschools, their teachers, and in some cases, their counselors to see if we can make that connection with them and their parent to see if there is some way that we can further support them.
I had a question. And I know this is not, this is kind of everyone's wheelhouse. There have been a lot of teacher, parents who have been confused about NWA and the fact that they're, while taking the test, a lot of children are getting questions about things that they really don't know about, which is, and so if you could give us a be, a brief primer on NWEA, just so that parents can better understand how that test works.
So NWA is not a high-stakes test like ISTUP or ILEARN that our students have taken. NWA is an assessment of skill level, and our students are measured against other students and their grade level across the nation. And so the students are receiving questions within their grade level band that have been tested and measured many, many times for their validity. And so as our students are taking the test, it is expected that they will get questions that they won't know the answers to because it's really trying to figure out where the students are in their learning. And so when we get that data back, it lets us know where our students are performing in comparison to students that took the test in their same year during the same window of time. And that allows us to then, as teachers and schools, plan on how we can best support those, those students in meeting their, their needs in terms of reading and math. Thank you so much.
I wanted to ask one question. I know Tim mentioned earlier that the deadline for switching from in-person to virtual. And what if we have students that after that deadline, it just seems like their, their grades are non-passing, they're having a lot of difficulty not having one-on-one instruction, and they're having a lot of difficulty with the virtual learning. Do we just let them fail, continue to fail, or how would we deal with that? Because I could not, I could see parents now saying, you know, I thought that this child was going to do okay, but they're failing everything, so what can I do? So.
Address that question. You know, one of the reasons we had some of the bumpy roads at the beginning is we allowed that window to stay open as long as we did. And it really never allowed us to really focus in on the, the virtual learning process. So, you know, to your point, we are going to close the window at three o'clock on the 21st. We identify students that are struggling, whether they're virtual or in-person. We're going to do everything we can to support that student. We have other resources. If, you know, when we talked this afternoon, you mentioned the family that you had talked to was, they had some high-risk adults at home. And they can't take the risk of getting COVID because they have high-risk adults at home. We're going to have students in that situation and that, and, and look, we do have students who are struggling. We always have students that are struggling. That's why we, they come to our schools. And we're going to work with that family to support their student however best we can. And, you know, the answer may not be moving that student to in-person, maybe providing additional resources. So our window is going to close on the 21st at 3:00 PM because that's how we're best going to serve all of our students going forward, making those, those switches and making sure that staffing's in place, making sure that bus schedules and, and other schedules are in place, so that when that transition takes place, it's a smooth.
I did have one more question. The Friday schedule, is that just second through sixth grade or does it include seventh and eighth grade?
It's kindergarten through sixth grade.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I don't see any other questions, so thank you so much, Pam, for your time. It was really lovely seeing you, as everyone has pointed out.
Thank you, ma'am, all your hard work.
We are going to move on to David Holt with a master facility plan phase two update.
Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Ms. Burke, I believe that Andy McNeely will be requesting to share the screen from you here in a second. But while we are, while we were doing that, I will kind of give you a, an update. One on where we are on phase one, before we talk about phase two. It's, it's hard to believe that we're a year into phase one. We started construction at Lowell Elementary about 11 months ago. And we've made a lot of, of headway. And then we really started the heavy construction at Moore and Central High School for phase one just two weeks ago. And I think if you've been over at the high school, you've seen a lot of change, a lot of good change and exciting things to, to come. We will be wanting to provide more updates on phase one Lowell and Moore and Central hopefully next month, as, as we have the opportunity, maybe do some things in person or some tours. There are a lot of really good things happening at Lowell. If you've been there, just in the last four weeks, there've been a lot of changes and a lot of things that you can actually tangibly see. So I'm excited to show that to you at some point here in the near future. But with that, it's time for us to start thinking about the next steps. We will be about one more year of construction with Lowell and the high school. And then, but as you're finishing a project, you need to really be starting the next project. And it takes about a year of preparation and planning to get ready to do the next round. It's also hard to believe, I just looked on my calendar, it was exactly three years ago, the September board meeting that we came to you with the concepts and ideas and the preliminary findings of a master facility plan. So we're three years already into this process. And I will tell you, the best part of my day, love it. Every day, it's fun, it's exciting to see this change and see what we're able to do for our schools. And we communicated to you three years ago that we were going to do this very methodically. We were going to do this that met the, the needs of and the ability of our debt and our ability to issue bonds. We just paid off this last year our, our bonds from Vision 2005. And I told you that our, our ideology of, of debt was we do one thing and then we do the next. And so with that, CSO is going to share with you, we are in the beginning stages of looking at what's next. And with that, there will be some high school changes as well. The, the high school will be phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, you know, as, I mean, because it is such a large building, you want to break it up in pieces so that you, you aren't doing too much at any one particular point in time. And then we also want to bring back to you, as one of our main components of the facility plan, was the equalization of our elementary buildings. And so tonight, we will be, you know, sharing with you some of those ideas for the next round for elementary, so. Mr. McNeely, are you ready to?
I, I am ready. Somebody will need to share the screen or get the PowerPoint going. I didn't have it queued up on my side, but I can get it quickly if I need to.
No, Ms. Burke, we'll be able to do that. And then if you just want to let her know when to split pages, we will do that.
Okay, I can, I'll request the cursor here. Good evening, President Burke and Dr. Hanson and board, thank you again. It's nice to be in front of you with another wave of projects here. Also tonight, LinkedIn is John Rigsby from CSO, as well as Victor Lanfair and Tony Heath from Skillman. And so you may hear other voices chiming in at times, but I'll, I'll kind of be leading the conversation and, and we will just take it from there. So it looks like I've got a control here, and let's see. I'll just, I can't change the slide yet. Thank you, okay, we'll just. Can you, have you given, let's see. Let me request again and see if I can.
Now you should have it.
All right. Yep, Terry, yes, I've got it now, thank you. All right, we'll start with the schedule real briefly. This is one that, I'm not sure if we've looked at this one report similar to what we looked at at Lowell. I know it's on, on the screen, it's kind of hard to read, but just the big idea here is the top row of bars are the two elementary schools we're working on right now, Pleasant Run and Grassy Creek. And then the bottom row of bars is the high school project. And so these are design phases, and then we hit bidding when we get out into these yellow bands way out here at the end and the construction starts in the red. So right now, on the elementary schools, we have finished some early schematic design work and run some estimate numbers. We're right here at the point of giving you an update at science board meeting. We'll be back in a month or so on the high school after we get some work done on that and get it to Skillman for them to do another estimate on the high school scope that we're going to look at here in just a little bit, just to make sure we're staying on track with the budget. So it's just giving you a picture of where we are, you know, beginning back in earlier part of this year, and our red line is where we are. And so a long way to go in design before we start into construction. But just gives you a, a graphic feel for where we are in the flow of the project. We'll jump into the elementaries first. As David mentioned, and we've talked a, a little bit in the past on big master plan, looks at the sites and the, the schools. We're looking first at Pleasant Run and Grassy Creek. Both schools are similar in a lot of ways, both L-shaped schools that have been modified through the years. But here at Pleasant Run, just to get a quick overview of the site, we are kind of rearranging things, putting buses on the south, and we're shifting an entrance down here that aligns with a street in this lower right corner. So the buses are down on the south side of the building, and all the parent drop-off happens on the north side of the building. I'm trying to move my cursor slowly, slowly, it's kind of hard to see. So we're separating buses and cars as far apart as we can. And then again, a drive across the front with, with visitor parking and, and front door access here to the front door as, as well. And then on the backside of the school, we're going to rework the playground. It's really large and spread out, and it needs some work, and, and there's a lot of surface area to take care of. So our landscape architects are working at, at bringing that into a more appropriate footprint. And then, as you'll see, some various shading, shaded colors on the site in different places. We're looking at some detention of stormwater like always to manage stormwater runoff before it gets out into the, the systems of the city. We have one new addition of about 12,000 square feet at Pleasant Run here of a new gym. We're basically replicating the gym at Lowell. And so it's very similar, it's not two-sided on the stage, but it has a stage, same-sized gym floor, same-sized bleachers. And then as we look at the plan, we'll see here at the south end that we need to remove some classroom space to make room for all this to work right. So there's three new classrooms added on the end of, of Pleasant Run to make up for that, so we don't lose classrooms. And then I'll just stroll, pop up to the plan here real quickly, so you can see that. These are conceptual plans, but just gives you a big idea of, here's the, the gym with the stage. Bleachers would be on the south side. And then because this gym comes right up against the west side of this wing, it does block classrooms and, and impact one other classroom. So we're replacing those with three new classrooms around the south end of the wing down here that is just above where the, the bus loop comes in. We're also working with the, the entrance to clean that up because now we've got people coming in the front door. We're making a better circulation path down through here around the media center to be able to get to the gym. It will also have an evening access door here, so for activities or off-hours, people can come directly into the gym. And then when buses discharge down here or pick up, a lot of that flow will be through here. We're possibly bringing kids out other doors, but this will be a primary end out of this south wing here to get to the buses. So that's a big picture of Pleasant Run. Are there any questions about that before I kind of jump on over to Grassy Creek? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, one of the things that I'll preface for each of the schools, it's important. And Ryan Russell, Dr. Hanson, myself, and several others really identified the priorities of each school. An appropriate-sized gym, an appropriate-sized cafeteria, a multipurpose area, STEM area. You know, making sure that safety and security was a part of the plan. So yes, Ms. French, as you saw up there, where the current gym is, is you're looking at the large multipurpose room. And actually, that cafeteria then is bumped into that gym to increase capacity into the cafeteria. So that is part of that. It's not new space, but it will be revised space. It's not new space, but it will be revised space.
Right, I apologize, I missed explaining that big component right there in the middle of the building as I went around past the front entrance. So this will get totally reconfigured in the existing gym spaces, as David just said. We are also upgrading finishes throughout all the other wing areas, classroom areas. The office just had some rework done, so we're trying to be careful how much we touch the office. But there is some work that needs to be done up in the front reception waiting and clinic areas. So we're looking at how much we can accomplish there within the budget that we have. But restrooms are getting a finish upgrade. And then the whole HVAC system is pretty much getting replaced with new equipment. So that's got, it meets the current airflow or fresh air requirements and energy codes as far as the HVAC system goes. And then new LED lighting throughout. So just taking care of some of those big items like that that are just needed in a lot of older building upgrades these days, or even ones that have not been upgraded too far back. The LED lighting is something that just is becoming a common feature. So along with this stage and the gym and the area down here, we will get another set of restrooms in this area again as we rework it. So there will be some public restrooms, basically like these, but facing the other direction. So again, that's the Pleasant Run scope. And we'll just jump on down to Grassy Creek. Very similar in a lot of ways, just buildings rotated, facing a little bit different way. We're doing a lot more kind of working with traffic flow around to the back of the school, kind of working with the buses here on the front, but giving them a loop back out so that they stay separate from all the cars. Again, east side on this one is buses, west side is cars and parent drop-off. Parent drop-off will come in, loop around through the side, kind of come around, give a lot of stacking space for parents to drop off before they loop back around and go back out. In this case, the new gym addition is right here on this west corner, adjacent to that back parking lot. So again, good parking for activities. And then the front door up here, as David just mentioned, there'll be upgrades. Some of the schools already have upgrades as far as the secure entrances, but we'll be addressing any additional work there. And then the playground again is reconfigured right now. The playground is down in this lower tier of grass area. We're pulling the playground up closer to the building and kind of reworking the hard surface play, because we do need some area for storm retention. And that's an ideal spot for that, the way the site drains to take everything that direction. And then, let's see, it kind of covers the outside. Inside then, as before, the blue is the addition. The front door is here at the south side, right here. So we'll be coming in and reworking some area of the office here as well, because of the waiting area being too small. The cafeteria is having the exact same thing done to it. It pushes into the storage space between the gym, current gym and cafeteria to increase the seating. And then the current gym, when it gets vacated for the new gym, it will get reconfigured to a multipurpose classroom and a STEM classroom. It's subdivisible, so it's a multi-functional, large and medium-sized space for the building. And then we are working back through media center upgrades as needed, classroom finish upgrades as well. And again, an overall mechanical system upgrade on electrical and lighting and HVAC to just bring it all up to current codes. Any of these additions we're doing, we're trying to make it so that the addition can be isolated for off-hour activities when people are using the gym for something. And so we can isolate the school and make sure that as best as we can, we can keep people from drifting back into the building. Any questions here? I didn't have my hand on the mouse.
Andy, a question, real quick.
Sorry, Andy. Yes, so getting in drainage so close to a playground, is that going to be underwater, I mean underground drainage again?
No, we were looking at that, we're still looking, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get back up to the plan here. It scrolled on me for some reason. We are looking at that from a budgeting standpoint, just because of the cost of underground drainage. We did that at Lowell, and it'll either be a fenced pond or underground. But again, it'll be, we're just at early schematics looking here. So as we work with the budget with Skillman, we'll make sure that one way or the other, the drainage is either protected from students or is in an underground storage system.
To answer your question, we actually had a progress meeting this morning. And one of the challenges on this site is the civil and looking at the drainage there. And so we, the preference absolutely would be to be underground. And so if we, at all of our elementaries, as we've had the discussions about Phase 1 at the high school and Lowell, there are a lot of new code requirements in the city of Indianapolis about stormwater drainage, as there should be. And so much of our planning and process for our new facilities somewhat starts with the need for drainage, because it takes a large amount of area and a large amount of cost to come back up to code on that. So it will be our preference, and that's a priority of ours, to make that work. We understand and I agree that a detainage area at an elementary school is not a preference at all.
And it's difficult to keep those totally dry, except for times of year like right now. But a lot of times it is damp or wet in the bottom. So with kids running around playing, getting it just totally underground is the easiest way from a maintenance standpoint and everything else. So that was, as David just said, that will be our goal. We won't go through the other two elementaries here very much, but I just wanted to make a reference to the fact that with the large scheme of all the projects that we're doing, Skillman has been working really hard with us to make sure that we don't cut the later projects short. So in this early schematic phase, we ran a quick run on Hawthorne and East Ridge with similar looks at the site and the buildings. Hawthorne's almost identical to Pleasant Run. And so, I'm sorry, I'm still on Grassy Creek here. But Hawthorne's almost identical to Pleasant Run. So we've had contacts, our landscape site designers, take a look at the layout of that site as well. So Skillman has run numbers on the site with the storm and all the input that we've got there with the new playground. And then on the floor plan, we've gone through a similar exercise of looking at what is entailed in renovating the building. It's very similar to Pleasant Run. So we have done some budgeting on these as well, again, just to make sure that we aren't getting too aggressive at this stage and leaving these last two elementary short. So just wanted to use that for reference as these drawings kind of scroll by here. This East Ridge sites are really challenging ones, as you can see, compared to the others, really long and narrow. And we're still in a lot of discussions about how to work the parking and the loop around this building. But since it is down the road, what we were really trying to do is get some budget numbers put to a concept. So we knew that we had some money to work with when we get to work on this in a few years. So that's the whole purpose of what we're looking at here. But their scope will be similar as far as pretty much a new gym at each school and then renovating the rest of the school primarily in finishes. We're not doing wholesale rework of hallways and corridors and classrooms and those kind of things. We're trying to upgrade finishes and really address just the peak needs and physical needs inside the building. So that's Hawthorne and Pleasant Run, I mean, excuse me, Hawthorne and East Ridge. And then anything on the elementaries as I get ready to transition over to the high school?
I just wanted to follow up and say that, you know, we still have four elementaries that we are working towards, Grassy Creek, Pleasant Run, Hawthorne and East Ridge. And, you know, so the question would be, and it should be, why Grassy Creek, why Pleasant Run? That we have started the initial design on first. From a maintenance perspective, from a future enrollment perspective, those are the schools that we've identified as the ones with the most amount of need. I will tell you, from an operations standpoint, Pleasant Run is one of our more difficult buildings to operate because of the age, the HVAC system, and some of just the complexities there. Our maintenance crew will tell you that's their most challenging building. Grassy Creek would be probably a close second. So that helps us identify what is in need. As we look at the next round, from a budgetary standpoint, we only have capacity to do two, next two elementaries. That's not to say that East Ridge and Hawthorne aren't in need of some improvements, but as we try to prioritize. And specifically, as we look at Grassy Creek, we have two, actually three new housing developments that have been approved in the last six months that could be providing upwards of 325 new homes in the next few years. And so we have to prepare for more students without, you know, immediately redistricting to becoming potentially to Grassy Creek. So we are working on all four elementaries right now, but we are really identified probably the two that we're going to push forward first as Grassy Creek and Pleasant Run. We just had our first meetings with the principals of each of those buildings last week. And so they're excited, they're looking forward, and they will be a big part of this process, just like Ms. Griffin was at Lowell. It's important for our building leaders to have a stake in this process. So Andy, if you want to move to the high school?
Sure. This is Phase 2 of the high school. And, sorry, I scrolled farther back than I really intended to. Phase 2 of the high school, so as was just referenced earlier, and we're getting, rolling big time on the Phase 1 work. And in this plan, as you look at it, Phase 1 are these areas on the west, just as a reminder, west and south sides of the high school. I'm sorry, the cursor is really hard to see. The west and south sides are what's underway right now. So we've taken, pretty well taken care of those whole sides of the school. Get that underway and out of the way before we start working on the north and northeast corners of the site up here. And a lot of what we are doing with all the work on the south side with the parent drop-off, the buses are already down there. But we're getting a lot of, all that parent drop-off traffic out of the front core area of the building as we look at additions at Door 1 and at Door 70 over here at the Career Center. And then as we've talked before, we're trying to address student parking in the northeast parking lot and in this north parking lot and the parking lot behind the Career Center as much as possible. And as with all these projects with a lot of this scope and the way our bid market is these days, our primary focus from a site standpoint is to make sure we get this internal core reworked. And we'll continue to work on these and get those estimates done and work our way down. We may have some alternates, or we'll decide how we work with these other parking areas as we get closer to the bid time. And with the input from Skillman, decide how much we really want to put in this next bid package and what may have to bump off to the next Phase 3 package as well. We have this inset window here that we kind of keep on here as a reference here in the lower right side of the drawing. This is the drive up to 21st Street that kind of takes a jog around the library over here. There are some concepts to work on that to straighten that out and clean that connection up where there's a better traffic light situation up here. But that's been pulled separate from Phase 2 especially, so it didn't bog down the main project that we needed to do. Because working with the city and other agencies on that drive, it's on its own path of getting worked through. But just didn't want to leave that drawing that's floating there in the corner not referenced. It is a part of the project as we move forward in the future. I'm going to zoom in then on the court, because there's a lot of exciting things happening in here. We've worked with Rich and Steve at the high school and the Career Center a lot on this. Door 1 is down here in this lower edge of the drawing, and Door 70 is over here. As you can see, the whole entry, the whole center core area is cleaned up with a loop that brings cars in and around. This reddish zone, as our site designers have worked on that, one of the things that the two of the two principals are really excited about is that it kind of ties the two entrances together in a common court area. This is going to be pavement that's a little different than the pavement in the parking lot. So as you pull up around the front of the building, you're not, you feel like you're in a court area, not necessarily in a drive. So it's going to change the feel at the front of the building. We'll have a whole new front door here at Door 70 that'll be, look similar to our new vestibules over on the west side and the Door 14 up on the north side of the Ninth Grade Academy. So we're trying to pull the unifying image of the school together as we work around these entrances as well. Same thing happened over here at Door 70. So the dark blue areas you see are additions, well, not total additions, I'm sorry. This is all addition here on the front of about, the number, now I forgot what it is, around 20,000 square feet of space, including the main office area. We separated the main offices here from the dean's offices on the other side. So as you come in the front secure vestibule, you would have a choice of going into the administrative office or the dean's office here through, out of the vestibule, then back into the building through a typical secure vestibule standpoint. And then along this corridor here, we've got each cohort group basically lined up, so 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th grade. And each one of those has a little cluster of offices with the dean, administrative person, and support space for that with some open area for students to sit and wait. So they'll each have their own identity along the corridor there. And then at this end, we're pulling the clinic up from the other side of the building for a couple reasons. But then they will have an access, kind of like a secure vestibule on a smaller scale over here, where people coming in to pick up their students or interact with people in the clinic would not be able to go directly into the school over here, it'd be like the front door would be. And then they will manage the students and visitors down at this end. If there's a need for an ambulance or anything like that, they will pull up to this entrance. And that's one of the reasons we're moving from the other side of the building at Door 39 up to here. Is currently, now we're putting all the buses there on the south side to have the possibility of an ambulance sitting at the curb like they do now, waiting at time for a student to pick someone up. That doesn't work, they just can't be there, or there's a conflict and the buses start showing up. So it was really important to move this up and get it closer to the front office area as well. So that's a big change from a building function standpoint. But I think everybody is pretty much, you know, in a total agreement that, I know there's always some staff hesitation of changing what they're used to. But I think when we get this well through, they'll be real pleased with that. And then over here at the Career Center, we're taking, sorry, every time I start moving, it scrolls the image, apologize. The corridor, I forgot I hadn't zoomed in here, had two views. As you come around the walkway coming over to the Career Center, currently the corridor extends straight up to their lobby corridor up here. We're intercepting that now and taking it over through an underutilized large classroom here. It's kind of a culinary lab, but it's one of the most more dysfunctional spaces in the building. So this will give us an opportunity to tie the students and building circulation in over to the other corridor and then rework that to make that a more functional culinary lab that Steve has started sharing some of his vision for. And that gives us a better contiguous area here with a little bit of addition to move all the office area from back over here where it currently exists at the end of the corridor when you come in to right here adjacent to the front entrance with a new secure vestibule here. And this is a little bit older scheme, we've got this worked out a little bit better now as we've pushed this forward some. And that the secure vestibule also allows access into the threshold without getting into the building like you currently do now. So we're working on the security here, so visitors coming to the threshold will not be able to drift into the Career Center itself. And then the office will be able to monitor, there'll be a secure vestibule into the office of the Career Center and then back out in here. And then Steve and his administrative staff and offices are here with some conference space, workroom area in the center, administrative assistants and those kind of folks. And then we're taking the current 301, that's right here next to the front door, and we're moving it back. And we're taking over the office area back in this area. It's comparable in space, we've got some existing columns to deal with. But that's moving back over here. And then the tiered lecture room that's just north of that, we're going to actually fill that in and bring it up to the main floor level. So it's a more of a multifunctional space than it currently is with the tiers so that they can use that for other activities, especially some of the culinary classes. We've got a link developed through a couple of doors and a small corridor to get into the kitchen, because those students go back and forth between those spaces. So Steve is really jumping in on board with really helping us work through a lot of this front door area for his part of the building itself. So, let's see, I think that's the last slide. Yep, so.
And we're a little farther along, we're a little farther along at the high school and Career Center, because some of the design that you're seeing, we started in Phase 1. And our eyes were a little bit bigger than our wallet in the first phase. And so we had a lot of ideas with, and we talked, you know, two years ago about the need to improve Door 1 and Door 70 from a security standpoint. So it was real easy to jump pretty quickly into Phase 2 at the high school, because we've been, we've been looking at these designs really for almost a year and a half now.
I will point out too, I just realized I didn't mention that the darker and lighter corridor areas here along the front, trying to get the cursor to catch up with me, we're widening all the way along the front of the building. The lighter edge of the corridor is. the existing line of the building. So the darker side is addition. So we are infilling but widening. Now we have to work on a transition over here as we come toward the ninth grade center because the loading dock and receiving is there and it kind of pinches us back down. But we're trying to help work on the flow all the way through that center area to, to help student flow to the ramp and, and up to the second floor in places, but also over to the career center so that it all flows and cuts down opportunities for conflict as much as possible. So that's pretty much an update of everything. What questions can we answer?
We wanted to make sure we brought to you what we're working on next. Because I don't like, I don't want you to be surprised if somebody comes to you and say, I heard that you're doing this. It's important for you as the board to be along the, along for the ride. And we will be continuing to bring to you concepts and ideas, but again, we're still pretty early into the process. But it's important for us to start this journey and as we get into next summer, then that's when we will be looking at issuing another set of bonds to pay for this and then starting construction about a year from now.
Yes. The, the elementaries will be in the spring a little earlier and then working again with Skilman on the construction and bidding schedules, we, we, we set this one exactly a year after the phase one so that we could work on it design wise and then get it bid in the same window time.
I'd like to say something about the presentation. Just, I have a personal experience with some of the dropping off and picking up some of the schools. And I'm so excited about the detail that's been placed on the traffic flow for buses and for the parents and drop off. That is going to be so much better, so much better for these schools and for everybody who's involved with the picking up and dropping off of students. So thank you for that attention to detail.
As you may have noticed that honestly, that's what we've, we started with first at each of our sites is outside civil and how do we improve flow? Most of these buildings were built 50 to 60 years ago and the traffic and lanes and everything were based on previous patterns. We need to modernize that. I mean, as, as we've talked about, we're building and updating these buildings for the next 30 years and we need to project out the needs for the next 20 to 30 years. And so we, we start really on the exterior, bringing the buildings up to code, safety, but traffic flow is what we've started with. And that's why, that's why phase one at the high school, we just really concentrated on that first. We could then work on some other things. Yes, Grassy Creek will be a lot better.
I'm looking at the high school right now and I'm really liking the roundabout. As a parent who had to drop off kids, that's going to make that work a lot easier. I'm thinking about when we have sporting events.
Yeah, that, that's part of phase one and the, the, I'm excited, really excited about the, the change of traffic pedestrian everything flow at the high school. It's going to significantly improve a campus that is very, I think, difficult to navigate at specific times of the day. And that creates safety issues, you know, and, and being someone who's worried about safety and over safety every day. I will tell you the traffic and car patterns are the things that concern me the most.
Well, I'm thinking about football games and things like that too, where they always are blocking off that entrance. It's going to be very easy for people to get into the parking lots now.
Yeah.
And it's going to free up a little bit of our police officers to take care of other things.
What is the plan for the administrative space that's currently in the freshman academy?
Yeah. From the beginning, it was, the emphasis was to move the administrative area to the front of the building because to increase security and not have people coming into the building to go to the office and going through the commons, that there's too much of an opportunity. So the next thought, and that's, we're, we're already starting to think about phase three would be moving the counseling center, the CSC to the current administrative area at the high school. We feel like it's important for our counselors to be closer to the main traffic area in the building. And so it, and space wise, it fits fairly well. And so the next question would be, okay, well, what, what do we do with the counseling area and the clinic? That's really kind of the thing that's unknown at this point in time, but I will tell you, the high school is one of the, it's our largest building, but has some of the least amount of multipurpose space, creative space. And so the thought is to, to look at ways to create multipurpose maker spaces, creating spaces, whatever you want to call them today. I like the opportunity of bringing in something in, you know, where the community could share some of that because we would, on that south inch, south side, it's the old door one. When I went to school, that was where I came in, door one. So there's an opportunity to really control where that CSC is and create some sort of space. I, I have lots of thoughts and ideas, but you know, there's, there's some next steps that we need to get to. But that's, that's kind of the thought is the CSC would move up to the office area. And then on phase three, we would be looking at many of the classrooms in industrial drive and modernizing those.
Yes.
But again, we, we're, we're still in phase two and we've got a ways to go.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. So thank you so much to both Andy and David for that update. Appreciate your time and we will move on
Thank you.
To Alison and James.
Thanks.
Let's go back to here. I'm applying the new skills I learned.
Good evening, school board members, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, board members, those that are near and far. It's a pleasure to be in front of you again. The late, great John Lewis said, if you see something, say something. He said, if you're going to get in trouble, get in good trouble. So that's what I did. Two years, about two or three years ago, I took my friend Ryan to Fort Wayne, Indiana. We went to go visit the second largest school district in the state to find good trouble. They had a resource, they have a resource center that services their families. We saw a gap in services in Warren Township. We identified that gap in services from surveys done by the CLC, the homeless consortium and CHIP. Though those surveys about two years ago said that there was a lack of employment on the east side. There was lack of housing, lack of transportation, lack of employment. When I took the trip with Ryan and Officer Crouch and Ashana Triplet, the, the community members, we, Ryan said, James, keep your expectations low. He said, don't let your appetite be bigger than your stomach. He said, we don't have that much to offer. So when we got there and saw what they had to offer, I was envious. And I looked at Ryan and I said, come on, man, come on, Ryan, we gotta have this. And he just said, James, all the way back home, I'm not sure we can do all of that. So we drove back home with envy. About a year later, a couple of years later, things happened. We started our strategic plan. And the engagement of our families and our community members said the same thing that we identified, that there were gaps in services for our families. I want to commend Dr. Hanson on doing a yeoman's job on getting a diverse group of people out to get their opinion on what we needed. Every single committee said the same thing that we lack in those areas and that we should start a community resource center. One of the proudest moments in my career, in my 30 year career is when Tim and Allison said, James, we found a way for you to get in good trouble. We're going to give you a community center, not me. They said, it's a playland for you. You know, we know the things that you can do. We've worked hard for the past seven years to develop relationships with community providers. We pride ourselves on being the best in the city in working with community resources. So I present to you today our strategic plan focus area in investing in relationships with families and the community and the Morehead Community Resource Center for families and schools. Go ahead and give yourselves a round of applause. So I set that up to introduce our team. We went through the interviewing process and we acquired a young lady by the name of Courtney Modestad, who was the program director for our resource center. And Courtney worked six or seven years with Stopover, the homeless shelter in Warren, in, in Marion County. Her skills and working with people and bringing people together, they are remarkable. So we're pleased to have Courtney on our team. We also kept one of our very own students, Jessica Shaw, who went to school in Warren Township, graduated from the high school, got her degree from IU, a master's in social work. And she's now working as our social worker or our program navigator for our program. We also acquired from the athletic department as a secretary to assist me in my efforts, Ms. Tiffany Coleman Tally, who has 12 years of experience in working with the athletic department and bringing together programs and managing one of the largest and the best athletic departments in the state. A picture of a person who's not shown is Leah Florrie, who is our McKinney Vento liaison for our consortium. We have a consortium. We work with Decatur Township, Matchbook Learning, which is a charter school, Hope Academy and several other schools. So in saying all of that, the Morehead Resource Center for Families and Schools is committed to supporting student achievement in our homes, schools and communities. And the center will provide first most academic assistance for our, for our families and our kids. Assistance to parents and locating and identifying educational resources in the greater Indianapolis community and a wide range of training in services and teacher and parent development activities designed to support student learning. Working with schools, parents and families on providing access to tier one, two and three community support services. I want to commend Alison for, I think Alison, it's been about 10 years whereby we started PBIS and that has grown over the years and the fidelity and the time that she and her staff puts into PBIS, we think that our resource center will complement everything that we've worked on for all of these years. So we look forward to merging the programs and using that step ladder in PBIS to provide tier three supports for our families and our students. We will also provide information and support for parents and families of English language learners. We'll show you some of the partners that we're going to partner with and we'll talk with that in a few minutes. And support and encouragement to parents in developing home environments that support learning and student success. We want to be the beacon for bringing our families in and engaging them in activities that will help their kids. We want a wonderful place and space for our families to engage in. What will you see in MCRC? Let's get used to saying that, MCRC. You will see an open airy space, easy access to services and a bright and cheerful atmosphere. Those will be the hallmarks of our building. Some of the agencies that we've already contracted with are Reach For You. They provide services with anger management, various workshops, behavioral health, counseling services, and a lot of programs that are free of charge. Our anchor, of course, is Community Behavioral Health Services, Gallow Hugh, Healing Hearts. They do counseling, drug education, individual group and parent support. Our partnership with DCS is critical because DCS has their hands in almost everything that goes on in Marion County. So our partnership with the east side office of DCS helps us to navigate all of those things that we do to help our foster care families. I'm a member of the regional council, so I have a lot to do with funding for families, not for families, but for, for providers that receive contracts. We are proud to announce our partnership with Sunny Day. And as you all may know, Sunny Day has worked out of Highlander Park, but now they will come over to MCRC and we hope to provide more opportunities for parents and families and students to get the services that they need in clothing and food. Community Partners is an organization called NACS through the Children's Bureau covering kids health insurance. We're going to work with Anthem, Indiana Youth Service Association, MLT Mentoring, Stopover. Eskenazi will provide programming for us in case management services. Our superintendent and our board, I mean, in our cabinet would like to see more prevention type programs and we intend to try to bring that home. We are proud of our partnership with La Plaza. And I was talking to Alison yesterday and Alison mentioned that, can I share this, Alison? That we are going to hire an interpreter to be a part of our resource center. And I'm so proud that we will have the opportunity to serve our Hispanic population. Community Alliance on the far east side. Many of you heard of Cafe. And we are actually in Cafe's boundaries. Cafe's boundaries span all the way to the north headed toward the Castleton area and it comes all the way to Washington Street, down to Cumberland, to Washington, but it does not go across South Washington. So for years, we have not used those services like we should. And now we are partners with Cafe and we're proud to announce that to everyone. When we talk about virtual assistance with our kids, we're proud to announce that we will be partnering with School on Wheels. School on Wheels is a tutoring organization that works with all of our consortium families for McKinney Vento. So we will partner with them for extra assistance with our families. And we will continue to partner with the trustees office, Outreach Inc., which works with our homeless families and the Bail Project, which works with kids and families who need a legal assistance or in trouble with the law. And once again, Anthem Insurance. From a racial equity perspective at the center of the neighborhood investment, let me, let me say this before I move on. We want to talk about what cultural humility looks like. And I, and I say cultural humility because we as Warren Township have engaged in what I call cultural humility for the past two to three years. We've had hard conversations with each other about what does it mean to be a steward of understanding what other people are going through. So I'm proud to be a part of a school system that engages in those types of conversations, which will allow us to move forward in the future to help our families. We will ensure that our community's needs are heard and that's not just what we're saying here. This is a major part of our strategic plan. We will provide professional learning opportunities for staff on productive engagement with families from diverse backgrounds. We will organize stakeholder focus groups to encourage ongoing feedback and transparency. We will develop activities that are of shared interest to the schools and the community. Tim often hears me talk about the reciprocity of working with the community, that you can't make policies in isolation, that you have to make those policies based upon the need of our community. So one way and unilateral communication is not good for a school system and we're trying to engage our families. And we will create engagement and support resources in cooperation with community partnerships for families by establishing this family resource center. We will focus on empathy in new developments and practice. Social empathy is the ability to understand people by perceiving their experiences, their life situations and gaining insight into their trauma and their structural inequalities and disparities that they face. As you all may know, we serve six zip codes. We have some difficulties in a lot of these zip codes. The poverty, the unemployment, the health disparities that exist, we think that our resource center will be able to address those issues and we will be able to keep data on how, when we help a family, we actually help a kid academically. And we will be able to keep data on how, when we help a family, we actually help a kid academically. I believe that our test scores will soar if we help the families become more stable and in turn, help the kids. Empathy can be a direct path to social justice. As the neighborhood should be considered in the context of access to opportunities, residents' experience, and the role of historic policies. Like I said, we as a school district are turning the corner. We've always been proud of who we are as warriors. I believe with this resource center that the best just got better. How will we measure what we're doing? Well, like I said, our success metrics will feature certain areas. We'll measure our success based on the well-being of our kids. As you all talked about with COVID, we've never seen anything like this in our lifetime. And I hope that we'll never see this again. We need to focus on those basic needs of our families. And let me say this, I believe that if schools were not in place to do what we did during the summer months, that our families would be worse off than they are. Chartwells and Warren Township as a whole, I salute you on feeding our families. I salute you on supporting our families. We will focus on public safety. We have been at the forefront of public safety and juvenile justice with our families for seven years. As a matter of fact, as David boasts about our police department, yes, we do have the best police department in the state. And we're trying to make people realize that even more so. When we talk about arrest for our kids and our families, our arrest record in dealing with our juvenile offenders is the lowest in the state of Indiana. And we take pride in not arresting our kids for the offenses that they commit. When we talk about health, we want to make sure that our families have access to healthcare because healthcare disparities are at the center of COVID. The housing situation in Warren Township has been really bad for years. And we're keeping a close eye on what's going on with the eviction process by holding meetings with trustees and the judges. We spoke with Judge Graves, we spoke with Judge Roper from Centertownship. And we're trying to find out more information on when things will get really bad for our families and work ahead of the curve to assist our families. That's why the timing of our resource center is very important. It is very important. While other people are focusing on academics, we're focusing on academics and social and well-being for our families. And once again, the employment situation is something that we're looking at in our families. So these are our measures that we will measure our success by. And as this says over here, as far as accountability is concerned, we need data to pinpoint problems, deploy resources, track progress, evaluate effectiveness, and justify continued support. And that's what we're going to try to do. I want to speak to technology. Our new technology system with Synergy will give us an opportunity to do what we've been wanting to do for a long time. And that is track family services with kids, with students in our school, and how they progress along the way based on the resources that we provide for our families. So I applaud the selection of Synergy. So as I conclude, I would like to briefly talk about a program that we've had for several years. And it's called the Evaluation and Support Program. It's called ESP. We started the program about four or five years ago. And we have several interventions that we do with our families. And our goal is to keep our kids from being expelled from school. So in addition to providing resources for our families, we have engaged in juvenile justice alternatives to keep them out of the system. We do not want to refer any of our kids to the juvenile justice system. We do not want to be a part of the school to prison pipeline. So we are doing everything that we possibly can to intervene ahead of time so that we can keep our kids out of the system. And our ESP program, we believe, is one of the best programs, not just in the state, but we're on our way to being one of the best programs in the country. And we'll let our data do the talking. And hopefully, our expulsion numbers will continue to go down. And we can model that for the rest of Marion County. In addition to that, we received, we were awarded a pilot project through the Supreme Court Justice Chief Rush and the Department of Education to pilot the first youth assistance program for an urban school district in the state of Indiana. So we will launch that program this year also, in addition to launching our resource center. And we hope to help a lot of families and kids stay out of the system. So that's a lot in a short period of time. And I'm sure you have questions. I will make myself available to you to answer those questions now and in the future.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes, ma'am.
I am so excited for this program.
Thank you.
This is going to be great for our families and our students. And I just want to applaud you for all the hard work that you've already invested in our kids and families here in Warren and throughout the state. I'm anxious to see this program roll out and to view it and support it any way that I can. So congratulations, this is going to be a great thing for our families.
Thank you. I want to thank Tim and David Holt and Allison, Brian and Pam and all the people who went ahead and started laying the groundwork for this. And so I thank you for all the hard work that you all put into it ahead of time. I also want to thank Shirley, the lady that paints. I want to thank Juan Jamiraz, who does the drywall work. I mean, it's the small things that mean a lot to you. I want to thank Jerry Kreitz for having to juggle several projects at once and to send people here and send people there. And to deal with my ladies that are over there, you know, and, you know, they want to get in there as soon as they can. And I want to thank Technology for having their guys, Justin and all of the people there to accommodate us. So even when we're not in the building and the building is being renovated as we speak, we have people outside giving food to families. We have academic coaches tutoring kids outside. We have meal pickups. There's a lot going on right now and we're not even in the building. So can you imagine what's going to happen when we get in the building? So I just want to thank you all for giving us that opportunity.
So Mr. Taylor, I'm so excited as well for you. Congratulations. Now, when is the big opening date for MCRC?
Their grand opening date for MCRC is October thirtieth. And Allison is looking forward to cutting the big yellow ribbon. Big scissors. That's our grand opening day. She's my media boss, so she's first in line. So that's the grand opening day. We plan on having, featuring the artwork of our students and some cultural artwork. We plan on having some restaurants from out of town or in town feature some cuisine, community restaurants. We plan on having a trunk or treat for kids. And we plan on doing a food distribution to our families because after all, it is a fall fest. Thank you. Any questions?
I can just make a comment. I want to thank James. Our most rewarding work is when we have to pull people back. They've been great conversations. He's a visionary with this. And James, thank you for taking the lead on this.
Thank you.
Making this a reality and a much needed resource for our Warren families.
Thank you so much.
And I just wanted to say something. I didn't realize I was on mute. But I am so excited. I think this is an excellent program. And I just want to ask, James, will you be hiring, will you guys, all of you that's working on this, will you be hiring additional counselors to work in this program?
No. The great part about the Community Resource Center is that we're leaning on the strength of the community. We believe that our counselors that are already in our school, that we just hired last year, they are doing a great job. And one thing that I've said about the school system for years is that schools have been kind of independent from community providers. And now we're breaking down those barriers. And we believe that we have a good number of community providers that can assist us in those things that we don't have time for as a school system. But if we all work together and work on sharing information, we believe that we can get the job done with what we have.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
A quick question. So my niece was unable to graduate from high school because she had a child her senior year, not Warren, because I know we work harder than that. So the parenting workshops that I referred to, are those for parents of our students or for students who become parents?
Those workshops will be sponsored by Gallow Hugh. They've been trying to do some parenting workshops for years. But when you call them parenting workshops, sometimes it's a derogatory term. So we're talking about changing the language whereby we can try to get more people involved. And then also, a lot of the workshops were, you know, you have to go for six weeks, nine weeks consecutively. So we're talking about doing something that will allow people the freedom to come and go. And I think the virtual thing will help. When people can't leave their homes, they may can log in to kind of like tele workshops. So we're talking about what that looks like for the future.
Then what resources do we have for our young ladies that?
Well, we have a program at Warren right now sponsored through the Marion County Health Department called Future Promises. The program is for young men and for young ladies. And there are a lot of other programs that are out there that we can identify to assist with our young ladies. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that actually ends our report. Unmute myself that way. So with our reports being finished, we are moving on to the citizens', business of citizens' presence. If there are any green cards.
No, there are none.
There are not. I didn't receive any either, so just double checking. Okay, so we are going to move on to action items. I see Brian Simkins ready to pounce on the podium, so I'm going to let him do that.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, good evening. Last month, I brought before you as discussion items, a lovely collection of policies, mostly current policies that just need revising and then one related new policy. And so taking them in turn, fifteen twenty, employment of administrators in addition to the superintendent. This policy is of your call, just simply essentially lays out various terms of certain administrator contracts, administrators in addition to the superintendent, and terms and conditions, and distinguishes non-certified from certified administrators and so on. Fifteen twenty point zero eight, employment of personnel for extracurricular activities. That's actually the new one, but it's related to thirty one twenty point zero eight as well as forty one twenty point zero eight. And that is for administration and for anybody who serves as a coach. It adds a section for the same types of requirements for K six or five twelve. It has a section that just says anyone who coaches intramural or interscalactic sports has to also follow the same types of stipulations. And also mentions making sure that we thoroughly look at, are alerted to convictions or suspected misconduct of anybody who coaches. Thirty two twenty point zero two is supplemental payment for teachers. And that added CTE teachers is a possibility for similar to STEM and their special related, special ed related positions whereby the superintendent can provide a certain stipend for those positions. Sixty five twenty finally is payroll deductions. That simply is a comprehensive list of the types of deductions that one who's employed here may get from their paycheck. And those are up for your approval. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I have Terry making the motion and Randy seconding it. With that, I'm going to throw it over to Julie for the vote.
And I'm going to clarify that we are doing this for every one of these, correct? Or are we going to divide them out?
So these are for action items, ten point zero one through ten point zero six. The six policies that are up for review. And I'm going to double check that for both Terry and Randy that that is okay.
Yes. I agree.
Okay.
Terry.
Yay.
Rachel.
Yay.
Randy.
Yay.
Lynn.
Yay.
Gloria.
Yay.
And I'm a yay, so it passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Brian. I am now going to go to Pam for a fee change. And I've pretty much got it pulled up if you just want me to share it.
All right. This evening, I bring to you one action item. A few months back, we approved a relationship with CIESC so that as a district, we could leverage some of their services. One of the most important services they offer is an opportunity for students who attend Warren Township schools to take the opportunity to participate in their virtual programming. As you know, when we started the school year, it was very important to us to make sure that every family and every student had multiple options. And so for some of our juniors and seniors and even some of our freshmen and sophomores, as they were designing out their virtual schedules, there were some courses that we were not able to fit into students' schedules to ensure that they are able to take the courses that they are passionate about and also to meet graduation requirements. And so before you, I have a list of course titles that our students at Warren Central, who are virtual, are participating in right now. Most of our students started on August tenth or on September seventh in their courses. These are credit bearing courses that will transfer and will apply to their graduation requirements. As you can see, there are quite a few AP courses, which is very important to our students in regards to not only are they taking courses that they're passionate about, but they're taking courses that give them an opportunity to earn college credit. And so tonight, I am recommending that in lieu of charging TBR fees that were approved in March for Warren Central courses that are comparable to what we are offering through IOA, that we charge a twenty dollar fee for each course that our students take through IOA. The total cost of a course at IOA is two hundred dollars. Obviously, when our students take a course in Warren Township, when they pay their fee, they are paying for their books, paper requirements, such as like art materials, things they need for music, for example. At IOA, they do have those needs as well. The difference is at IOA, they are, these courses are being taught by licensed Indiana teachers and not Warren Central teachers. So their fee is a little bit different. We are using our CARES Act money to cover the difference in that. And so tonight, again, since we approved our TBR fees earlier in 2020 to make sure that we were ready to, we were in a position to advertise those fees in advance to our parents. We wanted to make sure that we offered a fee that would allow families to participate in these courses, but that were comparable to what our students are paying for these courses at Warren Central. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
You said this was through CIESC.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, not seeing any questions, I will entertain a motion to adopt the fee schedule.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
So I have Julie making the motion and Lynn seconding. Do we have any discussion? Not seeing any, I will send it to Julie for a vote.
Okay, Terry. Okay, Terry?
Yay.
Rachel?
Yay.
Randy?
Yay.
Lynn?
Yay.
Gloria?
Yay.
I'm a yay as well. Passes 6-0.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now we are going to move on to discussion items with Mr. Holt to begin with.
Good evening again. Ms. Burke, would you be able to share those? This evening I'm bringing to you five different policies, four of which are current policies that need minor revisions due to some Indiana code changes and then one new policy. The first policy for discussion this evening is the policy 0151.1, which is the Board of Finance meeting that we are required to do each January. Indiana code now requires us to also during that meeting, to have the superintendent or designate, or usually the treasurer, myself, to also present to you the Fiscal Indicators Report that is published annually by the Distressed Unit Appeals Board, otherwise known as DOAB. We did that this past January, so this policy is just adding the language into our board policy requiring the Fiscal Indicators Report to also be reviewed at that time. The next policy for discussion is 6220, which is budget preparation. This is also just an update to include the new fund names that we recently changed to this last year. We, as you remember, we used to have a general fund, capital projects fund, transportation, bus replacement. Now we have an educational fund, education fund, and then an operations fund, the operation fund combined, the capital projects, bus replacement and transportation. And then this also just includes some language to add if the board ever chose to enter into a school safety referendum. It adds the options for that as part of the budget preparation. As well as during our budget prep timeframe, we have to include for you a resolution to anticipate the transfer of funds from the education fund to the operational fund to help cover some operational expenses. The next is policy number 6230, which is the actual budget hearing, or actually would be what we would call the budget adoption meeting. This is, as part of the budget adoption, now we give to you resolutions and then we are required to outline to you the estimated transfer that we expect for the upcoming fiscal year from the education fund to the operations fund. And if that anticipated amount would exceed 15%. We are just in, just beginning year two of this process. The first year we transferred just under four, just under 15%. And as we did the FY21 budget in March, I anticipated again to you that we would transfer 15%. If we go transfer above that via House Bill 1003, which was passed two years ago, we have to explain why that transfer would exceed a 15%. I don't anticipate us having to do that in the near future, but this just adds language to identify that requirement. Yes, 7300, the disposition of real property. This is, when you actually see the policy, you'll see a significant amount of addition. In the beginning of part of the policy, it actually improves the definition of what is real property. Real property for us would be land or a building. You will see in here, in summarizing really what the changes are. The changes are to in, if we were to dispose of a building or land, we must via Indiana code and statute now offer it up to any charter schools that would want to take possession. And we would be required to enter into a lease with that charter school for $1 a year. Yes, that is correct, $1. And this just outlines the terms and the conditions that go with that transfer in entering into a lease with a charter school. So there's a lot of language in there. This is one of the reasons is, you know, we had discussions many years ago about when, as we closed Morehead and Heather Hills. And, you know, we, we said that as we may not use that as a elementary building anymore, we will find purpose because those are valuable assets to us and we would not want to, we would not get the value out of it. One, if we were to sell it or if a charter school came in. The thing I have a problem with is that, you know, they're using it for a dollar and then they give it back to you after three years. And then you're left with that building and maintaining it. And then lastly, 7440.03 is a new policy. Just with the, the increased use of drones. There, this is a policy that schools are required to have now to outline whether or not they would, would or allow or not allow drones on their properties because drones need to be registered with the FCC. So this policy will just state that we do not allow drones unless specifically authorized by the Board of Education or superintendent. And if we do, we would be required to make sure or ensure that the individual using the drone has that particular drone registered with the FCC. We have allowed Skilman as our construction manager to use a drone to help take pictures. They have a licensed drone pilot to, that comes out and actually takes pictures. And that to me, to my knowledge right now is the only one that we've allowed usage so far. Okay. Okay, thank you for, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure I put that on my list to follow up and, and see that there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on those policies.
So that is for them to be on our property to fly their drones. What if they're off our property and they're like a kid who has a drone and he's flying it from off property and it goes crossed over our, I mean, there's no way we can?
We, we can't. That would not be included with this policy.
Okay.
It would only be, we, we are authorizing someone to use a drone on our property. And this is really in the event that a drone would create some sort of accident or damage and, or, I mean, they specifically want them registered with the FCC for air traffic control purposes. There are some drones that can fly pretty high. And so you want to make sure that you have a pilot or a, somebody who understands and knows how to run that drone. But your question with, that would not be something we would be able to police if they, if it was not on our property.
Okay, not hearing any other questions. Thank you so much, David. We're going to move to Allison Woods.
Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I should say good night. So I'm here to talk about policy number 8462. And this is an update to a board policy on child abuse and neglect. There has been a lot of legislation and update to Indiana code that makes us need to update this and update it pretty significantly. So I'm going to highlight the big changes. Then I'm happy to answer any questions or talk to you before the next board meeting as well. So in here first is additional language on mandated reporting. It used to be that if you had a case where you suspected child abuse and that you could go to your administrator, talk with them, and then you're, usually the administrator would make the report. And that has changed, not just recently, but, you know, we've changed our, how we're doing things to align with Indiana code, which is whoever suspects that makes that report and makes it right away. So there's not a delay in being able to, you know, have, have somebody investigate and make sure that that child is safe. The next thing is notifying parents unless they're the subject of the investigation or unless someone in their household is the subject of the investigation, the school notifies parents. And of course, you know, if we suspect that their child is, you know, has, has had an experience that we need to be concerned of and it's not the parents that we will follow through with that. There's information on here about the ramifications of failure to report. You must report if you have any suspect. It's really better to report than if you have any question in your mind. And some ramifications on both legal and, you know, your job and teaching license can be in jeopardy. Additional training, there's two different training components. There's staff training that's required every few years, both on child abuse and neglect as well as human trafficking. And so we are doing those as part of our safe school training, which we do for many things. And are, are doing those with all. In addition, I'm training students to have them be aware and know what to do should they experience child abuse themselves. And so we are using in six through 12, the teen wars curriculum. And then K5, we're transitioning this year to second step, which you guys are familiar with, with our social emotional curriculum. We've incorporated their bullying curriculum and they also have a child protection unit curriculum that we're layering in for that. And that training has to be done annually before December 15th of every year. And that, Mr. Taylor's office oversees that and our counselors at our school are the ones that provide that training. So those are the highlights for lots of changes. You can see it went from one paragraph to, I think, two or three pages. So I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Did you say that when a person complete the report, that they must tell their parents? Or if it's abuse going on at home, will CPS notify the parents? Or are you saying that the person that's filing the report notifies the parent?
So if the report is not a parent or someone in the household, the school would notify. So if, for example, a, a student came to school and reported that their neighbor, something was happening with their neighbor, you know, that we would notify the parents in that event. But no, if it was, if the, the alleged abuse was a, was somebody that lived in the household, then no, it would not be. But still, a CPS report will be made in both of those situations. It would just be that next light layer of communication.
Second question, if the individual completed CPS report, should they make sure that they share that immediately with the administration?
Yeah, so they should then, and that's in this board policy too, they should notify their administrator. And then we have some district procedures through Mr. Taylor's office where we also report it there. So he can help with tracking and following up on those as well. And we have a sense of how many, you know, how many reports we are making and if we need to follow up in the outcome of those. So yes, they still need to notify administration, but we don't want a notification of administration to delay the reporting to CPS.
In the event that a child is afraid to go home and it might be later on in the day, how would you handle that?
So when we call CPS, they sometimes ask us to hold students or they will send somebody out immediately. So depending, they do a, and James, feel free to jump in, they, I don't know if we use the right language, like a threat assessment essentially, and determine the level of harm that that child may be in based on that report.
Yeah, sorry. They do, we do a CHINS report and we automatically call a supervisor of DCS. And that's the benefit of our partnership with DCS, the Eastside Office, is that we can call any one of their three or four supervisors and they will automatically send somebody out. And in a case where we can't reach their supervisor, our police officers can reach someone immediately. Then they take over from there and somebody automatically comes out because our police are involved. So we're covered in that area.
Okay, that's great. And one last question. If a child is, has abused another child, when I say abuse, I mean, they could be abusing them sexually or in a very vicious attack. I, I just give an example, on the playground, one student was dragging another student and had something around their neck or something like that. So they were, the CPS said that if the teacher had not filed the CPS report, the school would have been liable. So when it comes to, do you have something in place for that also?
Yeah, so this policy does not, is not limited just to adults versus, versus students, adults and students. So there are times where that CPS report is warranted because of another student. And so yes, that, that falls into this policy as well. And it's not, it doesn't, this is not just in relation to adults, this is any sort of abuse or neglect.
Okay, great.
Okay, feel free to reach out if you have any questions before the next board meeting.
Thank you so much, Allison, for that presentation. And then we are going back to David Holt for the police SOP.
Thank you again. Earlier this evening, we had a work session to have extended dialogue and conversation about our police standard of operating procedures. Again, just for clarification, we are, we have our own statutory police department, which is allowed through Indiana code, which means we have a full serving law enforcement agency. And having that, you are required as a school board to create and adopt a, an SOP that outlines the expectations for the police department and police officers. This evening, we talked about some minor changes. This was, we created our statutory department in 2014. In 2017, we updated the SOP to, we had some board member changes and we had a superintendent change. We, we have the need to make some of those minor changes as well. But we also felt the need to take a closer look at some specific areas and sections within our SOP. Our SOP is already a very good document and we are looking to make it a great document. So as a reminder of what we talked about earlier this evening, some of the minor changes included some in, some enhancement and changes to the goals that the police department have for the police officers. And again, the SOP is for your expectations back to the police department. And each individual officer must sign that they acknowledge what is in the SOP and they agree to enforce that on a daily basis. So the goals have been adjusted just slightly from the, the, the SOP that was approved in 2017 just to actually make them a little bit more community friendly. And this Burke, and if we can just go to the last slide, that's okay. Yes, and then as you look and have the opportunity over the next month to review the, the draft of the, the new SOP, the first, the second bullet point there, administration inquiries, which is SOP number six. There are some highlighted changes there for you, which really define better the separation of duties and responsibilities between school administration and school police. And making sure that those investigations are separate in nature. And that is an indirect result from two local school corporations who did not follow really individual rights correctly and had school police intervening with school administrators at the same time. So we, we needed to expand the definition. So we, we needed to expand the definition and the the times when school police and school administrators were doing their interviews and they do them separately. The next bullet point, restraint and seclusion, we wanted to take the opportunity to also broaden some of our definitions and include in SOP number eight, where we believe is age appropriate, restraint appropriate. And this was also in coordination with Allison Woods and really looking at our board policy for all students and special needs students on the appropriate nature of restraints and seclusions. The next bullet point, de-escalation and use of force would be an SOP number 14. And this was really the, the section that had the most amount of change and the opportunity for us to improve philosophically, add some language. And really what we did here is intentionally change the title. It used to be use of force and de-escalation. It really needs to be the other way around. And that is intentional. It needs to be de-escalation and then what use of force would be after that. And it defines in there how we look at the escalation and the types of de-escalation and everything that a police officer would be expected to go through as a de-escalating a situation. I will also highlight in there and the use of force later in the section, three different sections we have outlined for our police officers that the use of chokeholds is not allowed. And so I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that in that, in that particular section. The next bullet point, reporting procedures and Warren Township School Police Review is in SOP number 17. And really this is a section that allows our police, police officers to, the, the freedom and the the ability to report a situation or deal with a situation of another peer police officer and feel like they have the ability to, to do that appropriately and without retaliation. The new part of that section would be the creation of a police review board to help mediate and go through that investigation when there would be inappropriate conduct from police officer that another police officer witnessed. So in earlier this evening, I kind of referenced this and it's not exactly like a whistleblower type of section so that it protected those police officers. The last bullet point, compliments and complaints. And this would be in section 22, SOP number 22, which really broadens the ability for community, other individuals outside of our police department to communicate to our police chief, the superintendent, the school board, compliments, and we don't want to just say it's always complaints because we get a lot of compliments. And so we want to make sure that we have a vehicle that recognizes when we do things well. So those are the major changes. And again, there's not a significant amount of changes in the version that's already approved. We appreciate the opportunity to amend this. This is a great opportunity to make us even better and outline the expectations to our police officers. So be happy to answer any questions over the next month as we go through this process. And again, this was, this document is and is reviewed and was really created by counsel from Church, Churchill and Antrim, Andrew Mano.
Thank you so much, David, for your time. Members of the board, always remember that if you have any questions on discussion items, please feel free to reach out to David or Allison or Chief Pettis, depending on what area you had questions. And so with that, it is time to move on to closing comments. I'm going to start with one from Michelle. Give me just a moment to pull it up. She apologizes for not being able to attend tonight. She couldn't get Zoom to work and apologizes for her technical issues. She is looking forward to scheduling socially distancing with each school to see how they are doing things now with this horrible new change that we have to live by. And she so appreciates all of their dedication, patience and hard work and hopes that everyone has a very blessed school year. And then I will go to Gloria.
I'm first. Well, I would like to say this has been a long evening, but it has been a productive evening. I would like to thank everyone for all of their hard work and I think working together works and this is what makes Warren so great. We're the pride of the Eastside. So thanks to everyone for all of your hard work. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Gloria. We're going to go to Lynn.
Yes, it has been a long evening, but as Gloria said, very productive. I enjoyed all the presentations. Thanks for the time that was put into that. Until next month, please say, stay safe and say, I can't, stay safe and stay healthy and we'll see you next month. Good evening.
Thank you so much, Lynn. We're going to move on to Randy.
As the others said, a lot of great information tonight, displays unbelievable teamwork. I mean, this district's hard to beat, let's just face it. We're at the top. It all comes down to all you guys working together, teamwork. From James to the chief to Dave with the renovation team, to all the administrators, Tim on down, Pam, Allison, Ryan, Brian, you guys all did a great job. I mean, it just, it just shows togetherness. I mean, what can be done? It's unbelievable. The sky's the limit. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Randy. Julie?
Yes, I'm very excited about the Morehead Community Resource Center. It's something that has been very much needed and you're right, every single community group did want that, did want something. This is going to be an amazing venture. Also, the reconstruction on the buildings, I'm just excited about all of that and seeing this new look and feel and equality, equalization of the, the building so that all of our kids are getting the same thing or having the same opportunities. So thank you all for hanging in there and have a great evening and a great weekend.
And now we will move on to Terry.
I told you it was going to be a great night. Just so many great things are happening and I just really want to reach out to the cabinet. Thank you for all your presentations today and the hard work there. It's amazing that three years ago, we were looking at these construction projects and just to see them transforming the buildings already. Driving by the high school or going by Lowell, it's just nice to see the change. Teachers, administrators, thank you for all you do. We know there's a lot of hard work still to be done. And thank you for accepting the challenge and working with our kids to make in-class, in-person and virtual a success for all of our families.
Thank you so much, Terry. So that leaves me and I'm the only person standing between us and a before 10 o'clock close. So I'm going to say two things. First of all, if you haven't filled out the census, please, please, please do that. That's very important. And second of all, I believe you have another three weeks to register to vote if you are not registered. So go get registered. Thank you, everyone, for the great evening. And with that, I will call this meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.